My colleagues are out there.
You're like with you.
Thank you, thank you.
It's like I'm surprised you're here.
Yes.
If anyone reads this. Not true. All is there. We don't want to be an afterthought.
Because no one lives.
Yeah.
They were losing.
I don't even know. Just.
That's. Sure. Good.
Yeah. So yeah.
Okay. Okay. I think we've got some of. And then it's on the call.
That's a big dagger.
Thank you. So I'll be.
You're welcome. For calling.
Gary Lee. I always remember me doing. I did not want to. I did sleep. Yeah.
Wait.
I believe. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I worked so hard. That's all. So yeah. I'm. I sure spent a lot of money for it, so.
There you go.
Okay. Having them. We're going.
Right. Every day.
I'm not more than stressed. Okay. To Mary, go ahead. Yes. So we recording or anything? Do we need to turn on or?
Um. Have a stack.
Just make sure that.
Thank you. We want to do a roll call, Jose.
Sure, if you want to do that with council, and then I was just gonna have all the staff introduce themselves.
Excellent.
Since we have some new faces.
You let me know when we're ready to start.
Will do.
You're, you're good. We're.
Okay, you're good. Go ahead, Mary.
Well, we're gonna go ahead and start. We're at our city council strategic planning retreat. And we'll go ahead and start with roll call of council. I'm Melissa Youssef, Mayor for the City of Durango.
I'm Gilda Yasel, City Councilor.
David Wood, your City Councilor.
Jessica Buhl, Mayor from town.
Oh, they have also one city councilor.
All right, I'll go ahead and ask the staff to introduce themselves, just so that we can, everybody gets introduced. Some apart, we have some new faces here. We also have Patrick Evar facilitators, who's helped us with our strategic plan. So also for Patrick to kind of get some new names and faces. So started in right there, if you don't mind, just your name and title.
Ben Lord, Administrator Manager.
Katie Fox, Operations Manager at nine one one.
Zeta File Director, nine one one.
Barbara, chief police.
Tony De Carey, Airport Director. Marty Cool, Sustainability Manager.
Justin.
Justin Crawford, Life Director.
Schmidt, Parks Recreation Director.
Scott Shine, Community Development Director.
Lansey Nixon, Community Engagement Specialist.
Derrin Hill, Transportation Director.
Bonnie Plain, Major Director.
Travis Lamar, Assistant District Assistant, also it's very significant across all of these.
Devin Schmidt, Chief Financial Officer.
Luke Allen Henderson, Library Director.
Allison Baker, Public Works Director.
Art Royan, City Attorney.
Karen Hyder, Assistant City Manager.
Mary Catherine Mallory, Budget.
Uh, Patrick Laven, Budget Analyst.
Elliot Betz, Budget Analyst. Patrick Evar, the Mayor of the Group. All right, so this is gonna be a little bit different. I was kind of looking at the council, Melissa, I think you're the original council member.
That's right.
When we went through our first strategic plan, and during that portion of it, it really was just the council and myself and Patrick as we're going through our first strategic plan, I think Devin was there as well. But our organization has evolved, just like when we first got here to now. Where this strategic plan is a point now where all of our E O T has had an opportunity to go through this for several meetings now, like four hour meetings for about the last two months. So we're really prepared to do so. So you're going to have the ability, not only just to see myself do a little bit, but you're gonna have apartment heads now presenting on the goals, walking through with the council how we got there, where we go through. So we'll go through the agenda today, the first one. Patrick's gonna start us off with his ground rules. Second one, I'll go over the mission, vision, and values. And then it is Devin with organizational stewardship. Who's next after?
Um, Scott Shine?
Scott Shine with Housing Innovation, Housing Innovation, Housing and Economic Development. As they do their presentation, their presentation's gonna probably be around ten minutes. They're gonna walk through the council of why they came up with the goal, some of the objectives they came up with, the key object, the key projects that fall into that. After that ten minutes, we will hand it over then to Patrick to facilitate the conversation with the city council to receive feedback on all of these. This is the first step, so there's no approval after this. The approval process will go through in a later session, but it will be probably in May. This is just our part to begin the council information and getting the information, council on things that you see maybe we may have missed or some things that you may want to include. So with that, I'll introduce Patrick to go over the ground rules and we'll start the retreat. Great.
Good morning.
Morning.
That was horrible. Good morning, Clay.
Good morning.
There we go. Everybody bright and whistling down. You know who's really thrilled about today is the staff taking so much time, all the directors are in there. They asked if we could keep you all day because they get so much. Well, the lighting will be back around with the fourth and second year. It continues to be exciting, present, and future for this community. Best days for Durango are in front of it, they're just not guaranteed. So think of strategic planning as the equivalent of community insurance. It's how you're trying to translate trends in both opportunities and constraints and identify what are those key priorities. Durango is a lot of things, static it is not. It's highly dynamic, so in some sense, what got you here will get you there. The question is, where are you taking the community and how are you shepherding those forces? That are pretty much around the community, some of which you don't have control over. And I know nobody in here has control issues, right? Not in this room. So as you explore today and think about opportunities, it's also to think about constraints, because that would offer you the city's most precious resource isn't money, it's time. On what do you want Jose and the staff to devote their time?
Hmm, not that.
Is that you have, that is, have capacity limits, you have capability limits. Government can do just about anything, it can't do everything. Sometimes government takes the peanut butter approach, it takes a little bit and spreads it out to everything. She's very egalitarian, but it sometimes does not have the impact. As you by councillors know, you're always in that car dealing with the community issue. You're just not always driving the car. It's not always the city employee that's the face of that solution. Sometimes you're in the passenger seat, sometimes you're in the backseat trying to bring resources there. Partnering with nonprofits, partnering with private sector, helping the community manage its own expectations. How do you enlist them in this journey? You have a very active citizenry in this community. There's dividends, is there not? How do you enlist them in that jury, helping identify their roles they play? So think of today and tomorrow as a pause, a reflection, examination, and an exploration. What is it that you want to do? Sometimes in these sessions, it's also deciding what you're not gonna do. Sometimes, once you're in it, you're never out. And I see this with organizations all across the country. I have that benefit of working cities coast to coast. It's a Renaissance time for local governments. People are paying attention to things historically they haven't. So what role do you want to play in improving the quality of life for residents who volunteer to live here? Businesses who volunteer to invest here. Employees who volunteer to work here, you volunteer to serve here. So as Jose said, this year is different than last year, and last year is different than previous years. It's an iterative process. The organization is maturing, it's evolving. The community is evolving, it's always evolving. The question is in what direction? I think under Jose's leadership, he's trying to shepherd, how is the organization evolving, adapting, and also being proactive? To try to get in front of some of these trends, to try to build a more disciplined organization about determining what it's gonna do and how it's gonna do it. That discipline and intentionality is really critical as an organization, and it helps you doing strategic planning. So to think of this strategic plan, it's not a straightjacket, but it's not option. Straightjacket means it's not to obligate you, it's to strongly encourage you. It's not optional in the main, in the sense that you don't want to just discount it. A lot of cities adopt strategic plans and then they put it up the shelf. I think you've done an excellent job of operationalizing your strategic plan, putting it into place. And the outcome of tomorrow, once you wrap up and once it's brought back to you in May for consideration and adoption, is that will determine future council agendas. Jose, the staff will devote their time to investing effort, energy on those items to bring back to you for consideration. So when something's on the agenda in July or September, and you wonder, why is it on there? You'll understand the rationale when you are helping drive those key council agendas. Not that everything on the council agenda is necessarily related to the strategic plan. However, there are many items in the strategic plan that will come back before you for consideration, adoption, all these different dimensions. So I'm gonna go over some ground rules, then I'm gonna hand it off. Staff's gonna break the presentation, now I'm gonna come up and push. Think of my role as it always is, I'm a flashlight in a mirror, trying to shine a light on things and hold a mirror. We don't interpret silence as affirmation either. So we want you to poke and probe. I don't think this council will have any challenges asking good questions. And that's good, because the more immersed you're in it, the better you understand it, the more likely you're gonna support it. Participation breeds commitment. The whole concept, a lot of people wash their rental car because they don't own it. So the more immersed you are in the strategic planning conversation, the more committed you are to its execution. So asking staff questions is always beneficial. And they know that their presentation begins when they say, thank you very much, are there any questions? Okay, ready, Robin? And they made this important, we'll take a mid morning break. There's food and snacks over there to help yourself. I want to thank Kyle, we're in front of everybody. She made an extra, yes, give her a round of applause.
That was great fun.
You can leave early today and buy. But I'm sharing her, previously I'm bribing her a little bit. I do this, I have a good portion of working with cities all across the country, and I work with a lot of people in roles like her, and she has just made it so easy for me, organizing the day, booking the event, bring all we have to do, show up and talk. And isn't that wonderful? So again, thank you, Kyle, for doing all of that. We appreciate it. So we want to go over some ground rules, so I'm gonna direct your attention, either you have it on your screen or you have a printout of the materials that Jose sent me last week. Ground rules, just good ground rules to have or to influence these conversations. Pretty basic, participate, do not dominate. You may not be able to talk to your heart's content, but we're trying to make sure this is not a monologue. This is a dialogue between you, your colleagues, and you and the staff. Second one, listen to understand instead of listening to reply. Sometimes we get so anxious about what we want to say, we forget what we're hearing. Anybody need to work on their listening skills at home? Anybody ever been told at home that they're not at work anymore?
That's a good one.
So in this conversation, you're listening to understand these points, and we know local government, there's a lot of moving parts. This is not arithmetic, it's algebra, and you thought you'd never use algebra. But there's a lot of variables. And sometimes that level of interdependence among those variables can be confounding. So ask good questions, and for those of you, this is your first one, ask, feel free to ask any questions. Sometimes the most basic questions really help an organization define and refine what it's doing. Because in government, there's assumptions made, and the longer you're in it, the more assumptions you make. Sometimes over the course of an organization's history, both elected and appointed officials can become biopic. So you want to be, understand your blind spots and be vigilant about making sure you don't fall into that. That, that concept of group thing. So ask good questions, listen to other people's point of view. How you disagree is gonna be critical as a governing body and the staff. So how do you work through that, resolving that conflict? Conflict's not always a bad thing, it's how do you work through it? And maintain those relationships. We all know everybody in here's in the relationship business, and trust is the currency in that relationship. And by virtue of being trust, it's fragile. So make sure that we're maintaining healthy relationships today as a result of this discussion. Everybody in here has passion for Durango, no disputing that. So how you work through that with those points of view? I know mayor and council do this, chose to run because they're great paying benefits. Right? So you're committed, right? You're still waiting for those, I've forgotten. Third one, you may not be able to speak as much as you would normally during a regular council meeting. This is not a regular council meeting, so it's not about going on and on. My role is to kind of keep the conversation moving. It's not a script, but it's not American. So we do have some timeframes around this, we want to keep the process moving. Fourth, ask good questions. It's helpful to ask good, open-ended questions. What, how, sometimes why? But understand the rationale behind it, because we know the five of you get asked questions by the public. I don't know if the two new elected officials have found this, but after you get elected, you could no longer put ice cream in your grocery cart when you get to the grocery store. Because you put it in the cart when you get there, by the time you leave and spelt it, because people that you don't know know you. Right? When you tell your spouse, when you show up somewhere and you go, I'm gonna turn the keys off, I'll be right back, they're like, no, you won't. You love that people know you, right? A lot of conversations. A lot of conversations. So there's an unpacking of these items to make sure you understand it both broadly and deeply. So ask good questions. Be, try to be concise with your comments, concise, clear, and compelling, best you can. And be collegial and respectful. It's an important attribute, especially in this day and age, where people wonder if democracy works. That you want to make sure being exemplary models, how you work through issues, how you communicate, how you share perspectives. Not every, you know, just because the city council has unanimous vote does not mean it's always a healthy governing body. Sometimes they're avoiding tough subjects. You're gonna continually have tough issues to contend with as elected officials, you all know that. Some of these issues today, as well as staff's gonna present them, as being easily identifiable, easily understandable. Making decisions is always a critical component of a healthy governing body. Some people think that talking about the same thing is doing something about it. We all learn in life that making decisions is usually the most critical aspect of you as elected officials, being good decision makers. You're rarely popular until you make a decision. Some people think they're the sixth council member of this community. So you have to be very vigilant again about that, how you factor in public influence. Being collegial and respectful, even when you're passionate about something, making sure that you're keeping relationships intact. It's important. You want the community to look to you as leaders of the community, both elected and appointed, how you're grappling with these issues. And you're doing it, not only what you're talking about, how you're doing it. Hope those are good reminders, nothing brand new there, just good reminders. Good, sound good? All right, so I'm gonna hand it over to Jose, he's gonna review the mission, vision, and values, what you have as well.
All right, so as we're doing our strategic plan, we started this, I guess, now three years ago, in twenty twenty one. We looked at our mission and our vision and our values with the organization, and we did change the mission statement. So our current mission statement is the City of Durango and our employees provide efficient city services, effectively maintain city assets and manage growth, are accountable, ethical, fiscally responsible, and collaborate with regional partners to improve the quality of life in our entire community. That's a lot. From a staff perspective, when we looked at it, how do we measure it? How do we really understand it? That's, that's big. And when you look at an organization and making sure that all of your employees believe in the mission statement and can recite the mission statement, we were falling a little short. While our employee survey showed that they do believe in the mission of the city, which is amazing. We do want to get it to a part to where it's concise, to something that we can all believe in and gather in, and that really sets that North Star of why we exist as an organization. So our E O T put our heads together and we came up with three different scenarios. The one that we like is the one in bold. So we look at, as in the new mission statement, we provide outstanding services and experiences for the entire community. The other two that we thought of are also, we are an exceptional experience provider of community services. And then the City of Durango is an experience provider based on great customer service for residents, visitors, and businesses. The reason that we stayed at the top one is we really believe at the beginning, at the end of the day, what we do is we provide services and we're an experience provider. How we provide those services and what experience we provide is critically important for the organization. So we want to make sure that we're providing outstanding services and experiences for the entire community. We thought that kind of really encapsulated everything, instead of kind of doing the business visitors and residents, but call it the entire community. So I kind of leave that there. Obviously, this is a retreat, we're not looking to get approval, but just any feedback as to where we look like when we're going with our revised mission statement.
Jose?
Yes, ma'am.
I do like that statement in the bold because it's simple and it gets to the point. Whereas the first one, there's just too much in there.
Absolutely.
Well, I remember being a part of the first one, and we spent hours on that. I want to say like I have a day. And there was so much to try to, that we wanted to put in there. But I think, interestingly, you captured almost all of it, right? You know, in your one sentence, getting it down to a sentence would be nice. And versus trying to memorize that top one, it doesn't make a lot of sense. The top one is exactly what we want to do in the nuts and bolts.
Absolutely.
But that, but you're one, you're synthesizing it down to one sentence, makes a lot of sense.
I agree. I think having a sentence that everyone can stand behind and understands and knows, and it makes it easier to align.
Um, I, I think it's super easy to remember. I think that's the key part, especially with all from the top down and the bottom up for everybody to remember and know exactly why they're, they're there. I guess I worry that it's maybe overly generic, but I, but I agree. It's, it's, it gets down to like what, what the city is here, what it's for. I don't know, do we want to put anything about like how we look forward, like into the future? Maybe, maybe that already says that within that, that statement. You know, I, you know, as we are kind of on this precipice of who we are, what we are, and the growth opportunity that we have, you know, what are we looking to the future at? And so maybe this encapsulates that, but maybe it's just something.
We may get a little bit better into that to the vision statement.
Okay.
Okay, so the vision is kind of like what we strive, aspire to be. So that might kind of hit some of those parts into it. The mission statement's really kind of more of, this is why we're here.
Why it exists.
Would you replace the whole original current mission statement with that only one sentence or part of it?
Yes.
Uh, with just that one sentence.
Move on to.
You know, people can serve, and they're concerned that possibly we provide outstanding services and experiences for the entire community is too short and simple. A lot of the, the current mission statement can also go into the vision state. Or so it's still in our, our documents, but you know, for our mission statement, we just need to be short and sweet and get to the point.
When you look at that mission statement with employees, the way I always look at it is when they go and they're doing their job, what are they here to do? What should be on their first, forthright of their mind? And I think that when we look at this community, it's being responsive, being proactive, you know, issue, working with them through their issues, helping them with their problems, and I think that's what that is. That sentence encapsulates is that we're here to provide them outstanding services and experiences. Obviously, it doesn't mean it's a hundred percent, sometimes as a regulatory agency, we're just gonna have to say no, and that's not gonna necessarily be somebody on the other side that's gonna say it was outstanding and exceptional. However, we can provide that answer in a way that is respectful, professional, that is actually outstanding and exceptional, even though it's a regulatory portion. So keeping in mind on a customer service type front, in an organization which we do provide service, keeping that on top of mind for every employee as they walk into their, their jobs, or doing their jobs, that we exist to do this, and we provide a pretty strong, powerful portion, not only to our, to our, to our workforce, to our visitors, to those that are just having any interaction with the state.
How do we feel about maybe we will provide? I think it allows some intention behind why we, why we exist. Like we will provide, like not necessarily demand, but like this is why we're here, is that, that we will do this, you know? So it kind of creates this, you know, environment where to strive towards to something, not just like we provide, but like we will provide. Like something like a step forward that we will do this.
Well, the problem with that is that what if we don't?
Well, I think that, you know, that, well, then why even have a? But I think we could always fall short of the mission statement at some point. And, but the, the goal is that, that we will provide. We don't have to, I'm just saying, just.
We did, we strive to provide.
I think it's good like that, but it's really. It's just that when you're talking to people and it's clear, precise, you know, this is it, and then they want to ask questions later, you know, I just review this, and it looks like some of this. Uh, okay, so the vision might be our values when you look at the descriptions, you know? So we're gonna get to the point of what we want, but we should be open minded, but I think for a mission statement, it's just gotta be short and sweet to a point. It's always gonna be confusion, but.
And you're always gonna get beat up on.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the one part that I, I want to make sure that, that people know, is that those that are angry, upset, or that just want to, you know, complain, will always say about, what, and I'm sure I'll get an email from a citizen that says, how does this live up to your mission statement? Sometimes it'll be right, sometimes we will miss the marks. There is a part of that that goes through. We're an organization based on humans, so humans do make mistakes, and sometimes it's just because of the response they've received. But I never think it's, it's, it's important enough to have something that's worth aspiring for and try to live up to it. Move to the vision statement. So our vision, and this is kind of what, what we want to be, is Durango is an authentic, diverse, multi-generational, and thriving community. Our residents value and enjoy a neat natural environment, benefit from the management of our city's resources, in a fiscally responsible, environmental, socially sustainable manner. Having the same part, already, a lot of things kind of thrown into that. I think there was a lot of great intentions before, but as we look back at when that mission and vision statement were made, I think there's a lot of people wanting their part of it in there. We're looking at some different ways of looking at it. The one in bold is the one that the E O T favored, which is our vision is a multi-generational community, which is authentic, diverse, engaged, thriving, and environmentally responsible. The other two that we had talked about were authentic, diverse, multi-generational, engaged, thriving, environmentally responsible community, or a safe, authentic, and diverse community, thriving through community engagement, innovation, and environmentally responsible. I think when we looked at the vision statement, we wanted to take the things that we thought were what we really see as the vision for what Durango would want to be. I think when you look at the City of Durango, the authenticity of our city, we're not a mountain town, we're not a mountain town, not a resort town, we're a town. Happens to be, happens to be, but we're more than just that. So that authentic part, the, the goal of diverse, making sure that we're diverse in our community. We always have an engaged community, and we want to continue to have that thrive, and then obviously environmentally responsible.
I think the, I look at it as a combination of the mission and the vision. So what, what is missing in the mission should be in the vision and vice versa. And I think the two key terms that I feel are missing is how to have a vision or mission language in there for growth and doing it fiscally responsibly. Those are the two key sections that I feel are missing, if we just downsized it that much. And as I mentioned, this is two years ago, similar as what council group was saying. In my opinion, in case, in this case, the vision, the vision is not what we are, but, but it's where we want to be. So any language, in my opinion, should be, Durango will be, or should be, or is vision is to be, and then put a very high vision on there, so we have something to strive for versus saying what we are currently.
I think when you look at it, it might be just words or portions of it, but I don't think that we would all say that we're there today. I think that it's something that we continue to try to be, those words aren't a definite of like where you get to check the box off and say, yep, we're authentic, or yep, we're diverse. No, it's a continual effort, it's continual thing where you want to be. So I'm not sure that it's saying that, that that's what we are today. Because I think if we said that's where we are today, I think there would be some pushback in the community that would say, no, we're not quite that today.
I just have a question, I just want to know from my, my thought process. And was Clancy involved in business creation? Because she has that, you know, that's her feel, like reaching out to people.
You're not. Trying to think if you were in that meeting, you're not, Clancy, you were not on that party.
Okay, thanks.
I like it. I think, I think it touches on what we, what we do ultimately want to be. And I would be a little worried about mentioning growth in there, just because there's some people that actually don't want a lot of growth. And we would have to define clearly what that growth is. Fiscally, I'm noting that fiscally responsible, or you know, the, the management piece of finances is not in there, but I'm not sure we want it in our vision as much. So I kind of like where you're going with it.
Those two things are gonna be controlled through your strategic planning and your goals for the community. Right, you're, you're, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, think of the, uh, vision is poetry, the mission is plumbing. Right, the vision is a destination you never arrive at, so it's, it should inspire people, and it's also aspirational.
Yeah.
So I think to Jose's point, it's, some of it's about the verb tense, but you're saying, look, this is what we are. You're always in the pursuit of that, you're always moving in that direction. It helps guide decision-making. But people should draw some inspiration from the vision. Like it, it reflects the best of your thinking as a community. Like it, it reflects the best of your thinking as a community. And I think what Jose and the staff have done really well here to pare this down is sometimes the challenge is it turns into the kitchen sink. A lot of run-on sentences and, 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 and they pared it down to where it's concise, clear, compelling. It's not slogan, it's not a tagline, it's not a motto. It's a vision and a mission. And to your early point about mission, it should be memorable. If not, as I said, if I'm a new employee and I've joined Durango, I'd like, what's my role in executing the mission? If it's a long paragraph, people don't remember it. Then you lose, you lose the point of having it. And then the vision is should be a conversation starter. So I would say to Mayor and Council, think of the vision as it's not supposed to answer all the questions. It's supposed to reflect your best thinking. And then when residents say, well, what does that really mean? Then you have another conversation. Well, let's talk about what we're doing to move toward the vision. And I think that's about being really self-aware, so it doesn't turn into that kitchen sink where it's that check the box and a lot of and run on and, and no one remembers it. So I hope that, uh, just try to build on what Jose shared. Just one of you.
I, uh, one thing that I think, and I, so I a little bit agree that there's a couple of things missing in terms of the, I like, I'm missing the word safe. I kind of like that word, like it's we're striving to be safe. Yeah. Um, cause I think it's super important. And then, but if you think about, I, I always use analogies when we're doing this for my businesses and it's, I always talk about it's like a, a ship. And the, the current path you're on and the current navigation plan going forward is, is your mission. And then where, where you want to go and the ultimate destination you're aiming for is our vision. And if you think about like a thriving community, that is fiscally responsible. You can't thrive unless you're fis- fiscally responsible. And I agree, I don't know if I want growth in there, but like managing growth appropriately. But again, if you're thriving and you're diverse and you're responsible, then you are managing growth as well. And so I feel like those kind of fit into all of them a little bit as I like think about it. Anyways, just random thoughts. Probably not be clear at all today, so.
I agree. Yeah, I think fiscal responsibility fits into thriving and I also feel like it fits into safe, you know? We have some of those, you know, safety mechanisms in place that we've instilled over the past however many years, um, that, that creates a safe fiscal environment where we, um, can weather, uh, any storm that comes at us. Um, something that I hate to even use the buzzword like this, but sustainable, you know? In, in the restaurant industry, we talk about environmentally sustainable. We also talk about business sustainability. We talk about growth sustainability from the city standpoint. So when we talk about sustainability in terms of growth or business or environmental, um, I feel like that kind of helps put all of that into one and like, you may not want to see us to be 50,000 people in 2035. That sustainable mind kind of helps, you know, set the tone for how we want to go. In my opinion.
Marty, did you have the, except we had a, a really in-depth conversation because we, we did use sustainable and then we switched to responsible. And I know Marty had some points to it, just to give a, not to try, again, just the background of kind of where we were coming from. Marty could like to add into that.
So one of the challenges with the word sustainability is it's not, it's not as clearly un-agreed upon or understood definition. People can apply their own definition and context to the word. Um, and so for instance, you know, my position at the city and, you know, our sustainability plan, we have to qualify it as saying it is an environmental sustainability plan. I think for a lot of people, sustainability, the, the strongest connotation is with that environmental. But that's also the perspective I'm coming from. You know, when I have conversations with Devon, she's thinking fiscal sustainability. And so I, we had this conversation and the, the, the challenge with sustainability was of all the words up there, it left the most open to kind of someone applying their own definition to sustainability. And then if you say environmental sustainability, then it's like, well, then what about this sustainability? You know, it was kind of, we couldn't, we couldn't make it fit. And so environmental, environmentally responsible is very we thought was more specific. And then if we applied the term sustainability, again, it was kind of like, well, then how many other words are we trying to like connect to the word sustainability? And then it, it, we, we just couldn't. It, it led to more, uh, uh, open-ended and interpretation rather than focus. Sure. That, so if that summarizes.
It totally makes sense. And
Yeah.
you know, I think sustainable or responsible could be its own word within that that mission, I'm sorry, that vision statement, you know, like environmental stewardship or whatever else. But I think responsible, it's, it's, it's pretty cut and dry about what responsible is. And you can put fiscally responsible, you put, you know, growth responsible, whatever, all of that. However, we even associate that because I don't know, I'm, I think that especially as we're talking about all encompassing, whether it's sustainable or responsible, we are adding those that value towards many different facets within our community.
You know, I do like the first statement there, but I'm wondering if we could maybe change it to a multi-generational community, which is safe, diverse, engaged and thriving and environmentally responsible. Because then, because authentic, I mean, that's kind of a, uh, authentic of what?
Right.
And then we get the safe.
Or if you didn't want to add a lot of adjectives down there at the end, you could also say a multi-generational safe community, which is X, Y, Z.
Oh, yeah.
You have any feedback? We'll take it. Uh, the mission and vision will, uh, kind of compartmentalize it and when it comes back, we'll keep the plan that's in there for approval in vain. And then finally, the values, uh, we're not proposing any touching of it. Uh, in fact, uh, the board of examiners that had come by last week specifically stated that the values or strength of our organization, uh, there's a lot of pride in our community, uh, or in our workforce community, uh, with the workforce and taking really a substantial amount of pride with that, with deflection, those values and reward programs that we do and the recognition all based on our values. Uh, so we're not, uh, adding any values or to make changes or modifications to that. I think they stand out pretty well. Okay. Uh, I'm going to kind of hand it over here to Patrick a bit, uh, on this slide, if you could just kind of give a higher level of
Sure.
uh, policy administration, council focus, uh, as we go through these presentations.
Of course.
So as you all know about, uh, as elected officials, you're focusing on policy, not so much, um, transactional aspects of the organization as well as. And as, uh, as Jose has become more seasoned, isn't that a nice way to say? Seasoned in his role and become more comfortable and confident, um, he's bringing more, um, sort of modern approaches about how the organization is functioning in terms of sort of building a internal capacity. Obviously partner with you as elected officials and partner with the community. So when we look at, um, just over here. Sorry. What do you think about the strategic plan? It's fairly conventional. You have goals and objectives. And then the question is, okay, how do you know what progress you're making? And output measures are not the same thing as performance metrics, which can be a pretty big challenge because government tends to count a lot of things that can instead of always count things that matter. So as you transition from output measures to performance metrics, it's a big change internally about other departments, um, view how well they're doing, what they're supposed to be, what they're doing, if you will. I hope you understand output measures is like how many gallons of water are treated? How many citations are issued? How many people attended, uh, what's the circulation is here at the library? A lot of output measures. Those are not the same thing as performance metrics. That'd be like saying whoever drove the furthest today here is the best driver. I know that sounds ridiculous, but do you want to write your?
I did. I drove the furthest.
So there is in government that tends to be sort of the, the status quo, the concept of we did better because we had more outputs. As the organization is more, is increasing its focus on performance metrics, it's more than cosmetic. It's in, in a way, it's a fundamental shift about how it knows what it's doing, both right now and how does it start planning? One of the areas of government is, is not even ready to deal with this generative AI. And it's coming. And you can, and I'm sure all the lecturers, despite everything they pick up within their professional organization today, a chapter meeting, a state conference, a magazine, what have you, um, generative AI is gaining traction. And government has a target marketing that's not really ready for it, but it's going to fundamentally shift with it. And I'm not, it's not about being overwhelmed by it. It's like, how can the organization leverage it? What's, what's in its toolkits? Toolkit about how does it use generative AI to map, monitor and manage, uh, performance metrics? So that's part of it. And then as you look at the operational planning, which you also have in front of you, that's more of the inside the organization, inside the organization, how does it operationalize the intent? Remember the strategic plan is not meant to be exhaustive. It's not a substitute for daily services. And I would venture to say that Jose and the staff spend about eighty to ninety percent of their time on core services. Some of which find their way into the strategic plan, but some which don't. And the challenge is for Mayor and councils is recognize that don't measure the success of the strategic plan by the length of the list. Because there's a lot that's going on inside the organization that's vested in the operational planning, strategies, milestones, actions, very foundational, good management, but doesn't always lend itself. Sometimes councils, and I know this council is not of a habit, but just as a point of reference, I'll use this as a prop. Sometimes when they get into strategic planning, they assume this is what the list looks like. That Jose and the staff are waiting for you all to decide what it is they should be spending time on. Um, here is a demand-based service-centric organization. So the operational plan is really focused on how the departments are determining what they're doing, how they're doing it and how well they're doing it and reporting that out as well. And that level of discipline and they keep going back to that, that level of discipline intentionality is a critical component about being effective in this organization, adding employees. So it's not always translated to better performance. And I think one of the, and I'll say this and I'll, we'll move on to the presentations. When you think about this is not the material, just to draw on here for you. When you think about present performance as an organization and you think about future performance as an organization, this, in the, the space there, that's referred to as a performance gap between where you are and where you want to be. Oftentimes in government, the tendency, almost unconscious con- con- uh, point of view here is the way to close the gap is often about resources. More people, more equipment, more fleet, more, all of our technology. That's part of the, uh, budget process. But what I have found, this is my practice, and I think what Jose is that we bring into this organization is not just about resources, it's also the imagination gap. And imagination is not, uh, childish, it's childlike. And imagination is a, one of the, one of the critical elements in organizational mindset. So you may recall, I think I asked this question last year, what years in here? What years in the community? What years in the organization? How are you trying to determine what you're going to do and how you're going to do it? Often it's not just about adding more of something, it's also revisiting your own assumptions and saying, what can we do differently? And reconfiguring things. So, uh, before I hand it over, just a question to ask you, uh, how many people in here like to assemble puzzles? As you had to do like a puzzle, assemble puzzles. About to break your arm a little here. We wanted to get into the pickleball puzzle.
Yeah.
Good segue, right. Uh, how many of you really good at the edges, the corners? Got a thousand piece puzzle with the Grand Canyon? You got the edges? Eight hundred pieces of the metal, they're all orange, tell your family, your kids have fun in. How many of you or your kids are into Legos? Usually you find them in the middle of the night. When you think about the future of Durango, is it a puzzle? Is it a set of Lego bricks? If it's a puzzle, we know the answer. Look at the cover of the box. Whether it's twenty-five pieces, five hundred pieces, those amounts. I'm not saying that it's easy to assemble the puzzle pieces, but we have, we know the answer. The future is written for you. When you look at Lego bricks, the future is written by you. So in a way, it's very liberating in that sense. I hope that resonates with you as you look to the, the present and the future of the community, which gets into the imagination. You're only limited by your imagination. Obviously with a pragmatic notion of that, being practical. You're standing on the shoulders of your predecessors. And sometimes they have to take risks, did they not? Prudent, thoughtful, timely risk. As we know, issues in this community don't wait till you're ready. They bang on the door and saying, we're here. Did you get it? Do you know what you're going to do? They continually put pressure on you as community builders. Say, what do you want to do? And sometimes it's easy to resort to the way you've always done it. It's soothing, it's comfortable, it's also somewhat predictable. But if you always knew what you've always done, you'll always get what you've always gotten. Sometimes that's not good enough. So when you look at the strategic planning, what you're going to hear from staff is see revisiting of some of their own assumptions. Some exploring of new ways of doing what they've been doing. And that's healthy for an organization, healthy for a community. And that really is a reflection of the imaginative mindset. I hope that resonates with you as you listen to these presentations. Some of it's not always very sexy, but you know, good roads is not very sexy to me. Right? Some of that stuff is supposed to be fairly foundation. I'm going to hand it over to Devon, who's going to pick up the, uh, presentation on the first item, which is organizational stewardship. Devon?
Thank you, Patrick. Um, so good morning, Mayor Council. Um, so before we dive into that, um, just wanted to give you kind of a preview of where we're headed. So on your left hand side there, you can see that we have the 2022 strategic plan goals. So that is kind of our current state, if you will. That's the plan that we're operating under today. On the right is what, uh, we have as a staff proposal, um, as we move through the presentation. Uh, we'll take a deeper dive into each one of these different goal areas um, and further describe, um, how as staff we, um, came up with some of the suggested, uh, changes here. So to kick it off, um, I'm going to talk about organizational stewardship. And so currently you can see down here, um, we have financial excellence, high performing government, diversity, equity and inclusion and environmental, environmental sustainability and resiliency. So what staff is proposing is that we take those three goal areas, we put them into organizational stewardship. So when we're looking at these three goal areas, um, with the city manager, with uh, city attorney, human resources, I T, diversity, equity, inclusion, um, liaison and our sustainability group, um, we were thinking about just the nature of their key infrastructure and the foundational processes in the organization that really, those three areas serve as a framework of success for Durango. And so we were thinking, if we're able to bring those into one goal area of organizational stewardship, um, that that would really further align the efforts around diversity, equity, inclusion, environmental sustainability and operational excellence and financial sustainability. So condensing those three goal areas into one would allow us to have better resource allocation as a team. Um, it would, if you're looking at those three areas again, um, looking at all of those together and then having those, um, be carried out by the most senior leadership in the organization also provides greater emphasis on those goal areas. And so the other piece that you'll see as we kind of look at our current state of what our plan says, while we have some objectives in there that are obviously very critically important to the success of the organization. What council will see as we move through this presentation, um, there's no real start or stop of these objectives. So in our current plan, um, one example is we have to prepare the annual comprehensive financial report on time. That's a very, very, very important project that we do, but it has a start and end. Where these objectives are meant to be more overarching and reflect no clear start or stop, as well as having a high policy definition behind them. So that you'll see that reflected as we move through. So, um, when we're looking at this goal area, we did provide a definition since we were bringing three areas together. So that definition is organizational stewardship addresses the key infrastructure and foundational process in the organization that serve as a framework for success, ensuring, ensuring the organization has good resources and approaches in place to support strategic tactical focus. This goal area ensures the integration of organizational efforts and critical factors for short-term success and long-term sustainability. So that's, that's kind of the definition. Um, and we had a lot of conversation around the word stewardship. And so the, the team really came together, um, and you know, we were thinking of operational excellence in all these different areas. But stewardship really encompasses financial, it encompasses sustainability in those efforts as well as the diversity, equity, um, and inclusion efforts as well. So as we kind of dive into these goal areas, um, we have one point one, which is to ensure a financially sustainable and innovation-led framework that strives on building effective partnerships to alleviate city costs, harness the power of technology for efficiency. that strives on building effective partnerships to alleviate city costs, harness the power of technology for efficiency, and cultivates a workplace that attracts and retains employees through a commitment to integrity, ethics, and organizational values. 1.2, we propose foster a strong community group partnership through effective communication and commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusivity efforts, while focusing on increased accessibility of services for underserved communities. And 1.3, we have advance a systematic approach toward environmental sustainability through focused efforts to conserve resources and mitigate environmental stressors by meeting our city, local, state, and national standards. So I am going to jump forward to a slide, and then we're going to come back to this one. We thought it was important to provide counsel with some projects that you would see in our operational plan and what would support this specific goal area. So as we're looking around the 2005 sales tax reauthorization, that's a good example that would fit into organizational stewardship. Under financial management transparency strategies, a couple of areas we have would be looking at our procurement bid schedule, updating our sales tax code, working with the Government Finance Officer Association, and securing a new financial system for the city of Durango. Our purchasing policy, looking at that purchasing policy to see where we can make recommended changes for efficiencies. Full pivot to budgeting for outcomes. As we jump down to the next one, so we have the police department and city hall projects. So that's looking at moving into those new facilities, as well as what do we do with the current facilities and how do we manage those? A ten-year CFP asset management for planned projects. And so that's looking at what maintenance and replacement costs and where can we collate those projects as well. Under inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility, we're calling that ADIA. Some of those initiatives would be the thirty percent of police officers are women by 2030. So that's one of those areas. Implementation of the land acknowledgement for all city facilities and communications. Under environmental sustainability activities, this is looking at improved consistency on our GHG inventory reporting. So increasing that frequency to annual providing. The energy performance contract, facility and energy efficiencies for onsite renewables. So how is that providing additional efficiencies there? Tracking and implementation and building an energy code in those EV parking code updates. And then tracking and implementing the impacts of our recycling services related to statewide extended procedures responsibility, which is legislation that's coming over the next two to three years. Looking at our continuous improvement processes and initiatives, this would be our lean six sigma. So having all of our staff either via green belt, black belts, in lean six sigma for process of efficiencies. Our ball bridge framework processes that we're currently working on. So we're measuring what we're doing and why we're doing and where we're adding value. And then under our IT security enhancements and broad prevention. This would be looking at enhanced email security software and upgraded fiber logic to better sanction our network. So those are a couple of projects. And all of it is somehow skipped over growing and retaining our employment. So these are some of the project areas that would fit specifically in organizational stewardship. So I'm going to jump back and let these objectives and this overarching goal marinate for a moment with counsel. And if we could receive any feedback. And I'll let Patrick take that.
Thank you.
So this is transitional time, right? Changing the language. The point here is to find some common, common ground about these different directions. Being, being direct about this, so as you marinate, I'll let Patrick.
Through the presentation. Last slide, I only heard one mention of staff. The organizational stewardship pretty much doesn't include staff because there was only one mention of staff. It was mainly for the higher leadership.
What do you mean staff about, about?
Yeah, continuous improvement for staff.
In the next slide.
So when we're looking at some of those continuing improvement process, any staff member is able to get a green belt or black belt. It's actually.
Participating.
Yes, yep, yep, absolutely.
All right.
A lot of action verbs, ensure, foster, strong, so a lot of adjectives, action words, adjectives. Being systematic approach, I'm starting to pull out some keywords here.
You don't have handy what we, what we had on those three. Did you?
What we had, our first objectives?
Yeah.
I don't have that with us handy right now.
We can get it printed.
Maybe we can print out our.
I was just curious, right? And maybe it's better not to. Yeah, because we would probably pull, you know, we would be looking at it, but I know we worked on this hard too. You know, I like the sound of what you guys have created. I just keep thinking, what have, what do we have?
We were probably a way, a little more prescriptive in that first part. I think we're, you know, as we were kind of evolving in the strategic plan, right? You don't just kind of rip the Band-Aid off at once. So we probably had more things, I think, like Devin had mentioned about get the fact for done on time. Well, that's really not an objective that would go into strategic plan, that's more that operational plan that staff develops. That follows all the things that we're going to put into these. So it really was a tend to be a little bit more that way, more prescriptive, but specific projects where what we look for in these objectives is really that, that bigger picture from council of. This is what we want you striving for for the next five years in the strategic plan. And everything that you should do should follow under some of these objectives. So it's a bigger picture, gives us creativity, we do our operational plans, and then we show how we're hitting some of those areas.
I see you definitely taking the bigger picture, and I appreciate that. And I do think in 2021, when we were creating these, you know, we were dealing with, you know, we were, we had overcome some financial difficulties. We had, you know, we were, we were into the specifics of what we wanted to hit on at that time. So now I see you guys taking a higher level and including those, like you said, in the details, but which I appreciate. And I like how you combined it into stewardship and those three in stewardship, because I think it makes sense.
One piece I just wanted to jump back to and just elaborate a little bit on was. So up here is where we, this is kind of our current state of where we are today. So those performance metrics will continue to develop, and that will be included in the state adoption for council in May. Really, what we're going to be working on as a staff, and this is a really large effort that's including managers, supervisors, emerging leaders, and staff members, is that operational plan. And so that's where you're going to see a lot of those project listings, as well as additional information. So when you're looking at it, you'll have the strategies, which we will connect to the budgeting for outcomes. So we'll be able to point to a specific strategy, 1.1, connected to a budgeting for outcomes. So what is it costing us to accomplish that in our operations? Our milestones and our actions. And so this plan creation you'll see here is from January to November. And the staff is really going to take longer time and approach working on that operational plan so that we're able to show how are we meeting these strategic goals and objectives with those objectives. So I just wanted to jump back for a second on that, and I did think of another, on this initial plan, I think we also had update the municipal code as needed. You know, so there was.
That in there?
Yeah, that was.
See, we were into the details. We were into, we need to do this. And we were kind of doing the operational plan in the strategic plan because we were trying to direct at a micro level. At the time, I think. Now we're trying to take a macro level.
Yes, and the intent would be that this could last for three to five years unless council.
Interesting.
Could come back and say, you know, we want to achieve that, and the operational plan will be more fluid, where it can change year over year and be readocked.
And it's very interesting to note that back then too, we weren't tying our budget to our outcomes, or just to our strat, to our strategic plan. And while we hadn't done that, that has evolved with this current staff.
Absolutely. I want to make sure you get, that, that first council gets credit. Because you went from like a, what was considered a strategic plan, which were really like ten tasks that you wanted to get done. To a strategic plan that had objectives, got a little prescriptive, but it still had objectives. It was a big transition during the time of COVID, where we weren't meeting in person. I mean, you look back at that, it was a huge shift, and what we're really doing here now is just refining it. And I think when you look at the best way that I've always, you know, looked at from a city manager and council perspective is council's pointing on the map. We want to go here, and then staff is developing the course and charting the course to get us there. So what you're doing here is you're saying, here's what we want you to go do. In these bigger parts, we want to be here, and then staff's going to develop, here's how we get there with an operational plan.
Just to reiterate, since I was actively involved in that inception, right? You remember not long after Jose had started with the city, the organization was in a much different place. And it was almost an instructional plan, it became essentially his work plan for what were the key priorities in the near term, short term.
It was.
And that was okay, that's not.
Kind of a work plan.
It was, that's not uncommon when newly minted city managers in place, and they're trying to identify priorities. Obviously, you're not where you were at that point. So as, as Jose said, as Devin said, the process is maturing. I see that a lot of clients, people become more comfortable, they become more proficient with the value of it, what it's doing. Often the conversations start to be more expansive. And there's this delineation between the strategic plan and operational plan. And I think that's where you are, this little bit of, not a crossroads, but at an inflection point to say, look, now you're separating it out and trying to keep mayor and council at a more strategic level. And as Devin said, I think it's worth repeating, on these items, these are sort of ongoing concerns. These are not going to change year to year. What changes are these? Some of these are project-centered. This is more purpose-focused.
Right.
So these are elements that will continue year in and year out. So want to make sure to manage expectations. Sometimes council, as the longer their time is on council, we're like, why are we still talking about this? Because it's an initiative that you're doing every year, you're never really done. Some of these, you're going to be done with at some point, they'll come off the list, the things will replace them. Other items on here will be ongoing concerns. So just trying to make sure that, right, am I reinforcing that right, Devin? And I think you're going to see that throughout these presentations, that these items, these goals, if you will, are fairly consistent with reflecting staff's best thinking about what are we trying to do all the time? Or what are we trying to do to help council move the needle? What direction are we helping the community discover its potential? These are actions to do that. This is the what, this is the how.
Got it. In our notes that you had sent us for the retreat, Devin, like how does the, can you go back to the other page? We have two, are you just, there's three here, 1.1, 1.2.
I think the first one wasn't numbered correctly. That's what I found in my notes.
Okay.
So he's talking about ensure, that didn't have a number.
So you, wait, that's 1.1.
Oh, oh, I see.
So it's 1.1 under ensure, and then 1.2.
Got it. Thank you, thank you.
That was me.
No, I said, no.
I know, I just made sure that that, that was me, I guess.
No, I just want to make sure that I had what you have, so I don't have to rewrite it.
Sure.
I do like a few things that kind of are in a couple of these, the effective partnerships, it's in 1.1 and 1.2. I think in order to accomplish a lot of the things we're going to set out to do, we have to have effective partnerships. So I think that that's great, that it's in here multiple times. I like under 1.3, this systematic approach towards environmental sustainability, trying to make sure that it is, you know, purposeful and like planned. It's organizational wide, not just in a silo by itself. So those are just a couple of things. I like that financially sustainable is in here. This is where we're getting into like the nitty-gritty of it, and maybe not the whole vision, but it's called out here specifically.
There's a little bit of inside baseball here. The concept, you may recall this approach. Every organization is perfectly designed to get the results it gets, whatever you're achieving, you're achieving on purpose. You want to change the outcomes, you change the approach. What you're seeing in the last years is there's been a change in the focus on the outcomes as well as the approach. Because if you want to deliver better outcomes, different outcomes even, it's not just about doing more of the same. So that, that's what you're seeing here is a sort of reconfiguration. You're rebuilding the car as you go down the road.
Interesting that you say that, because I see, I was, I was keying into the word approach in the definition. Resources and approaches in place to support strategic and tactical focus.
You're trying to arrive at different outcomes, or you're going to arrive at different outcomes. You're, you're changing processes internally to deliver those, because they're not just going to happen because, you know, whimsically. And then in order to execute that, these are the ways you do it. And then these will be linked to different ways of monitoring, are you making progress on these? It's almost like if you have a fitness, think of the strategic plan as sort of the equivalent of a fitness plan.
No, it's not. Some of that, well.
Why don't we take a biology break? Why don't we take three minutes? Get our room in the room, so let's take a biology break, ten minutes. Food management?
Same as I said, first charity thing.
Now it's tradition.
She. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Good?
Yep.
Well, there's anything, I know it's the first time to go through it, so if there's anything that connected a little bit or anything else.
They should be able to do that, you could just hear their voice like.
They're like, it's not refreshing, I shouldn't do that.
Sure, oh, absolutely.
I just want to check and make sure.
To say.
Last time it was just me, and I guess it wasn't so intimidating. We could spend all day, maybe the words and changing. Well, we're looking, there's something big that we don't spot, or there's something we put in like. You're like, you know, that's not sustainability. That's really not what we got to focus on. Those are the things to try to see, what we hitting everything, or something that's big that mapped out, or something we put on there. We're like, we don't get much going down that route.
Those are the things to try to see. If we hit on everything, if something's big that we have out, if there's something we put on there, we're like, we don't get much going down that route.
At the leadership level and you're seeing that or jazzing on that and people that that work um on the ground floor excited about it so. Um I think there's a version two point O or version three point O, whatever this is. All us kind of take that next step um and do a lot of great work so. Uh um some people are numbers people and then once again, I'm definitely a word person. This is right on my alley, really uh excited to be able to help uh walk through these goals and these objectives. So that will jump in um this was previously affordability and economic opportunity. And we sat down as a team group and looking at that and thinking about how was that helped guide us over the past few years? And the term affordability, kind of like what already Jose was saying about sustainability can mean so many different things for the people and how you. Define that notion, so we were pretty early on identified like let's say in a different way can we get better? We we don't necessarily control affordability in all its aspects. We we've definitely tried to leverage things and make an impact in that area. But that's not something firmly within our control. What what are we really trying to deliver? What services, experiences are we trying to deliver? So we can focus the conversation on that. Um and then, like I mentioned last or yesterday afternoon during the study session, I think it came out pretty clear. The in the community survey that economic development, economic opportunities, job creation. Those type of themes really need to be uh core, sorry, to what we're doing. So we kept references to economic development. We wanted to start, and I feel very strongly about this, with innovation leading in this area. Um Durango has a strong reputation for being innovative, for being like a thought leader. And and doing things, not just copying and pasting from other communities, but it gets to that authentic. Community, we really want to do things that are tailored to our community. That are built on partnerships and relationships in the community. So that idea of innovative, I think helps feed with this is how we want to approach these issues. What we sorry uh if we always do, what we've always done, what we do, we always got it. So we want to think about these these issues differently and leading innovation will help us do that. And then housing and economic development, obviously core functions. As you'll see in our third objective, we also wanted to capture uh sort of the planning and vision work around the. In in some aspects of community engagement around um what makes Durango distinct? And how we preserve that unique character as we face a lot of growth pressure? Um as we try and manage the competing sort of views about who we are, how much do we grow, where do we grow? Um planning, envisionings really core to that work. So we wanted to to raise that up to this objective level and make sure that was captured. Um so we landed on moving from affordability and economic opportunity to innovative housing and economic development. There's some discussion about economic opportunity versus development versus progress versus. Or the other terms, uh we bounced around a few uh different directions. We landed on economic development, that's a pretty common term that people relate to and understand. So it made sense to kind of land. And then we have three objectives that folded kind of the core elements of each objective to help them stand out. Housing one, economic development one, and then like I said, trying to really capture every this distinct. Feel, I like to refer to it as competitive edge, a competitive advantage for our community. People drive hundreds of miles from Texas to come here, not because we look like every other community. But we have a distinct feel, an authentic character, part of that's our natural setting. And amenities there, but part of it is how we've grown and been intentional about how we design the community. And we want to again really retain that um focus. If I may be so bold, could I have one of the counselors read the objectives just to kind of mix it up and not listen to myself all the time?
Let's pass it to you guys because I read all the time.
Sure. Uh two point one, cultivate innovative housing solutions and partnerships to advance the development of a variety of housing options to support. Multi-generational and mixed income community by narrowing the gap between income levels and housing affordability. Two point two.
So I was thinking as we were talking about the mission, um providing outstanding services and experiences to the entire community. The outstanding services and the outstanding experience in regards to housing. You know, we put ourselves in our community member's shoes and stressed out trying to find a house, can't afford. Uh so what what services are available that I can identify where um I can look for a unit that I can afford? Some of that we do in-house, some of that we do through partnerships. Um housing solutions, homeless fund, uh regional housing alliance, economic alliance. So we're providing services and different experiences in regards to housing. This last statement, you know. Narrowing the gap between income levels and housing affordability, that speaks to economic development as well as. We're housing based services. We also, we need to see things come up as far as income as well as be adjusted and have more diverse options as far as housing prices. So that speaks to, uh good, you said, I think just like Mayor President Dill said. Thinking about these organization wide, even though community development does a lot of this work. We want this to resonate across the organization with finance, uh with public work, transportation. We want to find ways where we can all work on these things together. So trying to incorporate the elements that touch on lots of different departments. It's also very uh attention. Two point two, anybody do you have any?
Just on two point one, I think it's spot on, it's exactly what I'm seeing. Us work try to do in in the presentations that you make um and the projects that you're working on. So it seems to be like it's just hitting it spot on.
I think it's important to not to over promise. You know, we're not saying we're going to make sure housing, everybody has affordable. Like we can't control that, we can't control the cost of labor and materials, that's. Process for us about what can we control? We can control development, a variety of options, we can say we can do that. And we can support multi-generational mixed income options. So try to think about what can we really influence?
I think that's supported.
Oh, so now go ahead.
Okay, um I think it's always supported by the word cultivate, you know, agricultural terms. I mean, you can add the fertilizer, put it in in the ground and water it, but you can't control the storm, you can't control the environment. So I think utilization of the word cultivate, I think really kind of encapsulates that entire thing. And I really like partnerships, I think that's the key point is that we can't just be the public entity shoulder at all. We have to kind of leverage those relationships within the community to to create a better um a better community overall.
Okay, Scott, you know, it reads really well and gets to the point. Uh but what I think is missing, and I don't know if it's appropriate, but when you mentioned multi-generational. Should you also maybe mention something like multicultural? Or do you think that the people reading that who are not um. Bangles get that?
It's a good question, I think we also, we have diverse envision, right? So diversity is really guiding all of this and brings all of us.
Yeah, I think the multi, well, the multi-generational word came from, I think, what was a powerful word from that first retreat we did with the council? Where it was being able to have a part where you can have a house, your kids can have a house. Your uh family can have a house that you didn't have to move out of the, move out of the community because your kids couldn't afford to live here. So that's where they were talking about that multi-generational is allowing the opportunity for your family to continue to live in Durango and not have to leave because it was too expensive.
I was gonna just read it, I didn't.
Stimulate economic progress through strategic collaborations with regional stakeholders, encouraging entrepreneurship and business growth. Supported by city design services and programs aimed at boosting local investment and economic prosperity.
Again, I think it's collaboration partnerships throughout the region. Through a lot of what we've done the past two years, with a real focus on entrepreneurship and growing from within. So the idea of economic gardening, instead of attracting outside entities, but nurturing existing entities. People who are here, love and know our community, how do we nurture that? Um and then figuring that last statement was intentional about this relates to clerk's office as far as. You know, business licensing, those types of things, what's the process like, what are the fees like? Even recreation programs, city design services, being the boosting economic prosperity. So how do we evaluate the cost of our services and and try and make them accessible and affordable for as much of the. Communities we can, so again, thinking, trying to think broader than just a community development centric lens. But how does each department touch on these things? Any questions on that one or comments?
Two point three. Preserve and enhance Durango's distinctive appeal and competitive edge as an attractive destination for living, working, investing and visiting. By engaging in community driven planning, strategic infrastructure investments and partnerships between the public and private sectors.
So you know, I can't speak to the intent behind this, trying to capture the word planning. A strategic investment, it's a lot of what we started to build and council's given us, you know, resources we need to really partner. Resprings will post a, not just be reacting to whatever comes in the door, but sitting out there and it's starting to shape and. Guide where that where that growth and justice is going, so. Only thing I thought, just destination, I don't want that, that sounds too. Tourist oriented or touristy, if it's an attractive place for living, working, but small thing.
Okay, Scott, I, you know, that investment. Is there a different word we can use? You know, I understand people, you know, want to buy second homes or. You know, buy businesses because a tourist driven um community is always going to produce uh income. But investing sometimes hits people as we only want. Financial corporations to come to the community. But that might be something if you could think about changing that word.
Yeah, when I think about it, you know, someone buying home or nonprofit investing in a. Housing development or something like that, so it can be, it's a wide range. I can't think about that picture.
I liked in all three of these, again, the um partnership, you know, and collaboration and making sure that we're not in this alone. And not just with other people in the community or other partners, but also like you were talking about in that first one. Like housing affordability isn't just how much your house costs, it's how much your water bill is, it's how much, you know, it costs to live here. Um and so making sure that we're all on board with, we all have a spot with that, whether it's utilities and trash recycle.
I, just to tie this back into the community survey, um you know, the. We got a forty two percent, which is a little bit lower um in overall direction that Durango is taking. I think this portion is the meat potatoes of why people feel. I, in my personal opinion, of how they voted, voted, how they, how they ranked. Um so I feel like what we do here, I think, has ripple effects that expand across all of the organization. About how we as a community feel about living here and and that interaction with with the city government, which is often. People's own interaction with government is on the local level. So um I feel like this is one that's really important that we get right um to kind of help. Get some of this feedback and tangible outcomes that we're trying to produce here.
Girls, push the quick projects, I, as you're all familiar with these, don't need to dig in a whole lot, most of those questions, but. Um these are kind of the top priorities that we see over the next one to two years uh to implement those objectives. For, you know, twenty eighteen housing plan, let's revisit that, open that up with this council and see if we're on, see what progress we've made. See if we adjust um targets or strategies have been in the plan. We've done a lot, it's in economic development, it's in that opportunity, we can bring a policy to you in April. About some more tools to use in that area. Um you mentioned a lot about partnerships, we've talked a lot about those two. Fair share directly relates to how housing is developed um in our community. Continuing to implement U R A, keep awareness of that with our partners. It's very much a partnership oriented and peppered. And then enhanced development services really speaks to how we interact with our customers, how we help navigate. Um processes that we administer. And then looking at the comp plan, that's really that community driven planning vision, how are we going to grow, where do we want to grow? How is our footprint um in relationship to the available resources? Has the environments changed, natural environment, economic environment, all those things as they have changed? This was last updated twenty seventeen, was like a completely different world since twenty seventeen. So we fund the really partnership with community engagement to a big effort to get that plan out there and talk about the vision for growth. Um from here, so for other key products we see.
Scott, just a little question. I, the, the previous slide is similar, better worded, I think, as the prior strategic plan as in categories. Now, homeless uh was part of the same topic before and it's no longer here. Is there, is there a place where it goes or is it just?
I would say it may be a little more operational as far as, you know, we're talking about partnerships, mixed income communities. I think we can drill a little bit more down into that and it also relates to to chief grammar and safety and quality of life. So um I don't know, it deserves a specific call out at this level, but I think there's room for it as we drill down into specifics.
I would look at that probably as more of a discussion from council on how. The guidance is on homelessness and the unhoused and what the staff. Uh should possibly be looking at, and maybe that's a conversation that you might want to have here. Because that part has been, if we recall going back to that email uh or the the council meeting. Um where we talked about it, it was, you know, nothing around a school, a neighborhood, a park, a business, a senior center. Which really took a lot out of the areas that were in the work, were in the city. Uh and so that's kind of what we've been following. So it hasn't been placed there in regards to, I think, where it's not an intentional outline, but we're just following the direction. That we received last, direction can always change. Uh and so that might be something, you know, using this time, the council would like to discuss of. Do they see where it needs to be added and what level does it need to be added?
Well, I, I think it's been removed and it's not really part of the multi-generational discussion, I think. So I'm just curious, like, does, we're speaking of a strategic plan, so does it need to be? In my opinion, it needs to be somewhere because it's an issue that is impacting our community. In fact, that we just removed it, this is maybe. An opportunity to present.
You know, Patrick, that's what I mentioned to you when we had the phone call that everybody could be included, so is it going to be included at some point? The housing, the um unhoused issue, the homelessness.
Yeah, I'm just heard of Jose and all you, this is a time that you're scrubbing these and you're doing exactly what you need to be doing, which is, is this compatible with your. Approach with what you're trying to focus on, and there are things that are not in here, this is a good time to talk about.
Yeah, it it shouldn't be put in because those principles were put in by the previous council. And um I do think at some point we are going to. Either have to simplify those current regulations and address the unhoused. Homelessness issue for the city of Durango because if we keep sticking our head in the ground, we're not going to make any progress on this issue.
I would just add that I think that. I kind of agree with Jose, if we want homelessness to be in here as a council, we need to take the time to determine, determine in what way. We want to address homelessness because that can help staff incorporate it in in the right way. When we were doing our initial strategic plan, again, back in twenty twenty one, we were in the midst of dealing with, I think, purple cliffs at the time.
Purple cliffs still.
And and funding for it with the county um and setting up the navigation center. We were in the middle of these very big homeless issues and they were kind of some of our top priorities. Um so we have to determine now as a council, if we want that in here, how we want staff to be focused on that issue.
You know, that's a very good point because like it's been mentioned earlier in this presentation that uh stuff changes. It might be time to revisit it so we don't like, look like we're so cold hearted to the community about the unhoused issue. So why is she open to having something mentioned?
I, I think it also invites a discussion, which is part and parcel of this whole process, which is what's your role? You know, how active do you want your role to be? And I think this presentation that Scott just did, which you did really well, exemplifies the role of the city. Most of what he just covered was you don't control, you're facilitating it. You're partnering with the private sector, which has so many different conventions. If we were going to do a Venn diagram of this, there'd be lots of bubbles in this. The next one on safety, you're definitely having control over the barriers. There are some things, you think the portfolio of the city services, the lines of business you're in, there's really no industry like the government that's so vast. And and Jose mentioned this earlier this morning, you're both an advocate and a regulator, so bringing all that back around. Say some of this is about your role, and I will share with you, cities around the country, there's a real learning curve about homelessness. And many of the cities are at a different stage of their understanding, and they're asking a different question of service providers.
If I can, just give Luke, give, when you, Counselor Jose, after you finish your comment, he'll give a one minute recap of just that homeless strategic plan and where that's been left with our partners.
Alrighty, okay, so. I understand what you're saying in terms of we're laying it all out here and it'd be a good idea to revisit this issue. And I'm not saying that we have to solve the problem, I'm saying that we need to put it back on the books. So it doesn't look like we're ignoring the problem, and that's exactly what we've been doing now. And I am sympathetic to the, with the count, the previous council went through with a lot of the factors that. The city did not have any control over because the general public did not want the unhoused issue. And the bigger problem within city limits and the county had a different perspective. But now we're here today and we should look forward with some kind of um. Guidelines, I'm not saying throw a lot of money at it, I'm saying make the first step.
I, so I, I'm gonna just jump in real quick before we present, because I know that he's gonna say where we're at. But I think we're here with this because of council direction. And so I don't want to, I I think that it wasn't just left off or taken out. I think through council direction, we've chosen to not initiate another location for another purple cliff. That was a council decision, not you, not your council, our, the last council. It was a council decision not to pursue any other properties, to look for another location for that. It was our council decision not to fund um homelessness initiatives that were in, within certain amounts of feet of the school. And it was a council decision and direction to go towards the, the continuum of care. The continuum of care efforts that we're doing. And so I, I'm clear, we've made decisions as a council, and I think that is reflected here of what we've made now. We need to make different decisions or we're in a different place now than we were a year ago when some of these decisions have been made, then fine. Um it's really hard to say, just because I've been through it for a few years, we don't need to throw a lot of money at it. But maybe we need to come up with some, a decision, every decision is going to be a lot of money. And every time we talk about a lot of money for this particular effort, we get a ton of pushback. And so finding that balance of, and and that's where we came up with the continuum care. Because it felt like a good balance to that council at that time that we voted on to go in that, in that direction. And so I, all I want to say is I'm, I'm arguing that because of council direction, that is why we are here. Not because it was just missing or left off, that is a very negative way to kind of look at. Our staff responding to direction that we have given as a council, one hundred percent. And you weren't on the council, and so that's fine, but I, I'm just saying this is directly because of council direction. So the Lopla County Strategic Plan on homelessness, a lot of different groups came together, built it. It was adopted, it built a coordinating council on homelessness that was a bunch of nonprofits, county members and city members, both non-voting. That could give strategic direction to the city and the county. And a lot of amazing initiatives are still working in that and are huge successes and continue to go. The big ones that did not and really came to a funnel point was um looking at. Um a kind of housing, transitional housing solution of a managed community, tents, structures, something like that, couldn't find a location. Also warming shelters, either daytime, nighttime, or both within the city. And what are called safe outdoor spaces that are parking, which is parking overnight that has roofs. Um those, all of those efforts were unsuccessful because we couldn't find land. We couldn't find an employee plan that was viable for people to work it. In fact, during that time period, all of our partners were having staffing problems for their own existing services. Those thankfully haven't worked, that's good news, but those were not working. And third, we couldn't find community support boards, and all three of those were big issues. So having all those conversations, the C C A, twenty thousand homelessness finally came up with a proposal that they came up with. To move to a continuum care model, meaning they report directly to the state, makes it better for them getting grant pool to funding. And they would take over bringing strategic planning, like a fully finished plan and finding the land for one of those things. And then the city council would go on it. Not too long after that was done, they decided, hey, we don't want to respond, be responsible for those safe outdoor spaces, the warming centers, the parking. Or the continuing, you know, continued transitional housing location finding, we're going to put that on the back burner. That was what this, you know, C C O, the Corde accounts decided and continuum cares, or C O C. And so that's kind of where we're at. I actually sit on the continuum care board, which is the coordinated entry system, and that's still currently where we're at. They're currently looking at, let's focus on the strategic plan areas we're currently doing and can achieve. And see where that goes and where we can build. So that's just like the short history of where we got there to that point. So those specific items that, you know, are the items that people say we're not doing anything because we don't have, which is say parking, warming shelters. Or some sort of tent or structured community is because it doesn't have someone who's willing to pick up the baton and do it. And we can also say one of the realized part is when we were looking for land, as soon as someone found out what it was for. All the land was pretty much taken off the table. It was very, very difficult to even find opportunities at this point that we could bring to council.
I am appreciate that summary, but I tend to have different opinions in some of these things. But I'll come to the point for the strategic plan. If, if council believes we have delegated to an external entity. Then in my opinion, let's show that we put in the strategic plan and say, we believe as a council that we have delegated homeless to another entity. Because I don't think that that is correct. I think homeless should be part of our, even in a high level, that we don't even have to speak about cost or anything. But that we consider homeless and providing some basic living conditions for the homeless people as well as the pathway out of it. Should be part of our strategy because it's part of our population.
But we don't say in here that we're going to provide housing for teachers and, you know, um. Yeah, first responders and stuff, but that's part of our innovative housing solution, that it's part of what we believe. We don't say in here that we're gonna, you know, make sure we um do a big initiative for transitional housing, but it's something we're doing and it's something. Those are, that's more like in the projects, I would say, not necessarily like here.
Good example is the Best Western on that topic. You know, our initiative to try to make that affordable housing alternative.
I think the, some of that is encompassed within multi-generational mixed income. While it doesn't say unhoused or homeless specifically, I think it can be a part of that. Um but looking at, you know, the twenty twenty two strategic plan. You know, number four was address homelessness for the community. Four point one, continue to work with Lopla County to identify and implement strategies to support individuals experiencing homelessness and to mitigate negative impacts of homelessness on the community. And four point two, to provide funds and resources to support. And four point two, to provide funds and resources to support community partners in their efforts to serve individuals and families attempting to transition out of homelessness. Um, and I feel like without diving too much into the details, like I think that's our role is to help those community partners um who specialize in this. And this is their, their role within the community. I feel like that could be, I feel like that could be you know, not so succinctly said, but I think we can incorporate that into the, the two point one.
I think that's a good point, which we do do. We do support them through our housing, you know, through our community grant funding significantly.
We can, we can hammer, I mean, you can get words with two point one to maybe dovetail some of that language into that.
Because I think we decided that without a housing division and or department in Durango dedicated to that issue, that partnering with communities that have the resources and manpower to support that issue better um was the best outcome for the community.
That definitely can be something we would put in the operational plan. And that could be a point that would be specifically uh addressed. However, the one caution that I would need from you, because there's three council members who are right here that voted and direct, or directed me not to support anything by a school, a house, you know, a church and everything else like that would mean that if a partner organization is, comes to us and says, hey, I'd like to do a warming shelter here and it's within that boundary, there is a council, three councils who are here that have directed me not to go down that route in a meeting. So if that's a part that we need to go to, that might be direction that needs to be revisited uh by the council to say, okay, we're going to partner. And I would need to make sure that I'm running in line with the direction of the council. If that has changed, then change that we're okay partnering with an organization to do warming shelters or, you know, one of those services. And where does that, where is that, where can that go? Because right now, again, I'm just following the direction. I'm not trying to put that on council. I'm just as a city manager, it would not be good for me to go, nope, I'm gonna go ahead and go the other way. I need guidelines from the council of what that looks like now, if that's going to change.
Well, Jose, you're right. You know, I think your suggestions are, are good, but there's always a bad. Okay, I think this doesn't need to be the operational part. I think it needs to be right up here. Uh, what Dave suggested in two point one, to make it clearer that um, this is on our radar and we we're, we want to do something, but you know, I'm not suggesting do a managed camp or whatever, but just put it out there so the residents know that we're also thinking along this, this train of thought.
A group, if that's the council's direction, I'll obviously uh follow it, but I think my part with the complication from the staff side is if it's put on there, that means I have to do it, which I will, except for that I have this direction that's hamstringing me on another way that I can't do it. Because it's like, we want it on here, but we don't want it anywhere in these areas, so then
So this is, you know, this is, this is, you know, what I had thought. Everybody's gonna rationalize everything away and we won't get down to the, the uh, the nuts and bolts of what we need to accomplish. And that's what we're doing right now. Okay, the previous council, the previous council. I mean, I've heard that this by whole firm, the previous council, the previous council. And what I've heard from just being in the community, the previous council was pretty much um very lively in the discussions, you know, and it didn't go well with the community. So.
We didn't buy that.
They didn't like all the conflict.
Yes.
But yeah, so this way, we need to get through this rationalizing in a way and saying the previous council and let's do something right here. And I do like what Dave suggested. I thought that was a very reasonable suggestion.
So let's ask this question. What's not happening about homelessness that you want the city to start doing that it's not already doing?
What are they doing?
Well, he, he, you, we just heard.
Luke, go ahead and just talk about what we're doing.
So what we're doing.
The city of Durango, not us.
No, I know. As an organization, it's a full of page. It's one of my favorite pages on the city website, which is the list of the things we're doing. It's literally why I wanted to move here. Because this city as an organization is doing more than any community I could find of its size. And I've done a lot of research since, since then. And I still can't find a community our size that's doing half of what we're doing to address homelessness. Um, and so I'm just pulling that up. It's a wonderful page. I like sent to so many people. It's called homelessness in Durango. And it's got a lot of wonderful resources. Tom has done just a stellar job of keeping this updated. And so let's see, we have ongoing funding, we have no cost land leases, VOA homeless shelter, housing solutions, Southwest Transitional Housing Facility, Mano Resource Center, Espera, Hilltop House, VOA Low Income Shelter, uh Senior Housing, Manana Nina Unhoused Locker Program had to end. Really bad results on that one. They asked us to end it too. Ongoing funding, Axis Health Systems, Detox Center, La Plata New Services, Core Program, Mano Resource Center. United Way funding goes to Axis, Durango Food Bank, Housing Solutions in Southwest, Manasuit Kitchen, Durango, this is our block services, Durango Adult Education, Southwest Center for Underparents, VOA Shelter, VOA Safe House, Women's Resource Center. Other, um, just a bunch of things we've done with outreach coordination, bus passes, new utility rebates, goes on and on. It has been a huge investment. And one thing I'll say is if we put it as a strategic plan level, it will absolutely be at the city council most every meeting. Nina, Moxie and such CIA, they will fill the room saying, okay, this is your strategic plan. Let's get that housing, warm housing shelter built. Because it will say, we are taking now strategic control over finishing the strategic plan. That's not what we're saying in that, but that is what was like, and I'm not saying that it's not where council can go. But I'm saying if you do put it in two point one or make a two point four for it, it will just be a very large conversation at every or every other meeting, which is fine. But that is just the direction it will go in our community at the top.
When you look at the previous strategic plan, it had it spelled out in there as well and we were not overwhelmed. And just, I, I think we killed it pretty much for the last year. I would be okay with uh what Council would have uh suggested, what Council Yasi seems to support by just adding a sentence under two point ones in line with whatever uh address housing or continue to address housing through partners indirectly or some general term about, sorry, housing, homeless. And, and that allows us to either work with the COC or delegate or whatever it is, but I think at least it's still on the strategic plan because it's an important topic in our community.
Would, if there would be in regards to with the intent being to continue what we're doing now, so continuing in the way that we're partnering with organizations in the support of the unhoused? See, for me, because intention's gonna mean everything for that, because if it's on there, the next question is, well, what does that mean? And I need to understand from the council, what does that mean? If it's, you continue to do what you're doing right now, but don't jump into a managed camp or do, you know, housing or anything like that. Okay, I mean, for ours, it's y'all's plan. I just need to make sure that I know what the intent is. I think Patrick had a good question of is it that we're not doing enough or is that we just wanna continue what we are doing today?
I'd like to clarify my statements also. Uh, you know, I think we can say how we support those organizations without calling out homelessness and unhoused within two point one. I think we can still say that we are cultivating these relationships to address um socioeconomic conditions or, you know, low income or, or no income. I think there's other ways that we can address unhoused and homelessness without, without handcuffing staff to homelessness or unhoused.
To announce the direct development of a variety of housing options and support multi-generation and does mixed income community, including low income, like housing options.
I mean, or no income. I mean, mixed income is zero to a million. I mean, there's, there's such a wide range. But I just think that we can still address some of these things without without.
And that's why when we were originally making our strategic plan back in the day, we worked hard at calling it affordable and attainable housing, really for all. Um, and so we weren't separating it by specific groups. We definitely called it affordable and attainable. We didn't just want affordable in there. We wanted attainable because like you talked about also the workforce, housing options, also extremely important. Um, so.
Well, it is extremely important that we put something in and I, I think uh Dave always thinks a lot more definitive than I do. But, and I might be wouldn't think I'm gonna kind of pack that in. But I think since this is our plan and it's gonna be here for what, two to five years or whatever, that we need to mention it because the housing community here and what we're gonna put into housing and all the stress, all the problems, all the hardships are going to, going to continue to happen just because of the national economy inflation and all that. We're gonna continue to have the unhoused issue. So we need to put it in the plan since this is going to last for two to five years. And it doesn't mean that we're gonna throw a lot of money at it, but it just means that the city is continuing to think about this. And the stuff that Luke mentioned, that page should have more prominence on the website. So people know what we're doing.
We, we put it on the front page multiple times, you know, in response to specific incidents. Um, you know, closer personal lists and other times. So it, it's, it's one of those things that Tom has done a really good job of highlighting with press releases and placement.
And then I'd also like to add, I really do appreciate all the strife and tension the last council went through dealing with this issue because, um, you know, just from what I was informed about, the whole managed camp, parking situation, you know, overnight camping, parking, all that really got out of control. And at that time, with COVID and everything, as managers, we didn't know that was gonna slam us. So it's all good.
I think this is a good example of public policy that um helped you make the distinction between problems you can fix and issues you can only address.
Wait, what did you say?
In your role as policymakers, it's important to make the distinction between problems you can fix and issues you can only address. Well, about homelessness, you're gonna manage it. You're not gonna solve it. And cities are spending catalyst resources to try and fix it. And so I'm just about managing expectations. I'm just sharing this as a perspective. But me, the five of you, not, not so much the staff, but it's for the public. Sometimes it's just said in passing, how do, and we all in this term appreciate uh managing expectations is an ongoing concern and public policy is made by those who show up. So how do you filter through not just the first tier people, but the rest of the, the rest of the community and how you address them? I think the way to say it here is um a variety of housing options. From my vantage point, I think that covers the entire roadmap of from wherever somebody is on that continuum. Um, I, life does matter, you know, this, I'm just trying to stretch your thinking here, so.
Can I support that? Can I just support that comment that you're making? Because one of the biggest accomplishments, I think that I've experienced recently in the last couple of years in working with city staff on this issue is our partnership that we made with Best Western. And a hundred and twenty units to ultimately, that will be done in the time of these coun, of these counselors. And that is addressing exactly this issue of the, uh, this will provide that type of housing for the unhoused, we hope, and, you know, for a hundred and twenty units. So I, I see that in here. I see that housing option in that two point one. Without definitely, without explicitly saying such as Best Western, um, uh, but it, it, it's in there. And so I, I think for me, that's one of our biggest accomplishments that we've worked on addressing to address this issue of unhoused.
Let me just state the obvious. And what I gather leading this discussion, there's no in, sort of inference that staff is taking from this conversation. They're gonna stop doing what they're already doing about homelessness services, right? You're gonna continue those services. So that's gonna go on. That's, again, so they said that's operational, so it's not, because it's not called out here. Remember, there's a lot of things the city, the staff is doing that doesn't lend itself to the strategic focus. It's operational. There's, that's not just about homelessness. It's about every department can go down there and list the services. There's many things they're already doing that doesn't owe the price of this thing. As you look at public policy, because really for mayor council, when you think about public policy decision making, you know, there's really two ways that people will consider it. There's one way, and it's not better or worse, it's just different. It's time to abbreviate here. Here's an issue, here's an opportunity, here's a challenge. People get to the answer. Finance people are like this. Raise your hand if you're finance of this room. Finance people. Engineers are like this. Engineers, raise your hand if you're in this room. Finance and engineers get along well together because to them, there's a high degree of precision. It's called divergent thinking. Another way of thinking about public policy, it's not, it's not better or worse, it's just different. There's an issue, there's an opportunity, there's a challenge. Here's an answer, here's another answer, here's another answer, here's another answer. This is called divergent thinking. Never ask an attorney a yes or no question. Never ask an HR person a yes or no question. Never ask a planner a yes or no question, because their response is, it depends. They're contextual thinkers. When you look at, in particular, homelessness, many at the top of your story today and tomorrow, there's a lot of options. The question is, which option is the most suitable to this council? There's very few times in public policy, at least in my experience, where there is the solution. I'm fresh out of silver bullets. They don't exist. Now, when finance closes books, you want them to have a high degree of precision to know, this is exactly what we closed at. When engineers designing a building or a brick, you want them to say, yes, I know it will hold the truck. Nah, I think it will hold the truck. So you want precision and accuracy about certain dimensions of what you do as policymakers, yet at the same time, when you're considering options, consider they have a lot of options. The question is, how big, how, how much do you wanna take on? Because there's no silver bullets, some of these things. And that's not just about homelessness, it's about a lot of open talent. And you can lose a lot of opportunity chasing like what's the perfect solution? And keep pursuing it, keep pursuing it. I'm just offering you as a way you can think about public policy discussions along this way.
I am, I'm, I'll make one last comment on this. I see zero harm in adding the word homeless somewhere in the strategic plan. It won't hurt. It's a very boring topic in our community. It has impacts on our population. Be part of the strategic plan. If council believes it should not be on the strategic plan, that's, that's okay. I mean, if, if that's, I just think, what is the harm in adding it if you feel that there's any community member that has, there's so many people in our community that have raised issues about homeless or the impact of homeless people. And if you're not, it's something, it's really, it's not such a big deal.
Add that, I think if you were gonna add homelessness, you should also add workforce, you know, attainable housing. Uh, because we, we, they've always, we've always combined them together. If you're gonna get into specifics, I wouldn't leave out housing for our essential.
But I'd also always argue that mixed income, like Dave said, I support what Dave was saying. Mixed income is zero to however much money you wanna talk about. And so it does include it there and we can have our efforts listed in the projects, just like we have our efforts listed in the projects with every other aspect. I think that makes more sense and falls in line with what we're doing much better than calling out every little thing.
I agree.
And getting it all listed and forgotten and then we forget something and then we're you know, missing the bone. So that's what I.
Can I make a comment? Just for an observation? I've experienced the unhoused problem in three different cities. And from my perspective, Durango is doing a fantastic job. There is no answer. There, in my prior jurisdiction, their answer was, we are going to be the path of most, most resistance to the homeless. So the police took that direction. If homeless people came into the community, they were confronted immediately by the police. And they did not have a homeless problem in that city, but they just ignored it. And they were able to get away with that for a long time. They never asked me for legal opinion on it and I didn't get a legal opinion on it because I know my lane. Um, I also live in Colorado Springs. Colorado Springs is a very different tape on this and they have a huge homeless problem compared to Durango. So I don't know why what Durango is doing is working, but I don't see you guys as having a homeless problem compared to other communities that I've been in. You're kind of right in the middle. Um, and I have to comment, uh compliment the chief because no one's mentioned it, but they have more contact with the unhoused than anyone else. And the, the policies and the interactions that they have with the homeless here works very well. Um, and we're helping out with the courts to do that. So I mean, I'm very proud of the fact that, you know, we've been able to actually, I feel like we save lives and help rehabilitate people and give them opportunities to get off the streets through the, the use of the court and the use of the police department. So it's a difficult, difficult issue, but I feel like what you're doing is actually working very well compared to the other two communities I've been part of.
Great.
Yes.
Alrighty, so we're going on this new mission statement that says. Alrighty, so we're going on this new mission statement that says we provide outstanding services and experiences for the entire now, entire community also means people that are, um, diverse ethnically and culturally and also economically. Okay, so of course it would do me well if we could put the unhoused or homeless or something in this statement somewhere so we don't lose sight of it, which is how, um, Olivia feels that it was mentioned before, but we're just washing over it. I do understand that. I'm not calling for a managed camp or, you know, housing just for the homeless, but I'm saying let's be able to be a little bit more humane and put it in our strategic plan. And let's not be fearful of people coming down here like Luke seems to think they're gonna start gonna demand that we build this stuff because there's one or two words are changing.
Well, we are working to build it.
But why don't we put that in, uh, that socioeconomic status in there and no other, or no other ethnically, you know, diverse call out? Like, why is that called out specifically, but nothing else we're working towards is called out? That's what I'm concerned about. And so that's why I'm saying that I think it's all included and I support what we're doing and I have. But like, I don't feel like we need to start listing things because then it's just gonna be a long list of everything we're supporting and doing.
Which is what we were, where we were in.
Which, yeah, exactly. You guys included everything. Yeah, everywhere.
We did.
Which is great. I'm not saying, we had to start somewhere. Yeah, totally.
And if you're gonna do that, I mean, what about the mental health?
Yeah, exactly.
You've got, unless you got mental health, how can you enumerate them all? Then you leave one out and face the back foot.
That can come up in five years. But right now we're doing stepping, uh, steps to get to a plan that's gonna work for the current council. And it appears that, I know Olivia myself wants to include it. Dave's, um, I think you do too, some way, some kind of wording. And that's all we're asking. I know that there's a lot of tensions from the previous council on all the conflict they had to go through uh, the past, um, dealing with all the unhoused, homeless and so forth. But I think we need to put it in this one.
Well, just to reiterate, I, I think two point one says a multi-generational mixed income community narrowing the gap between income levels and housing affordability. We're trying to do that in the projects that we're doing. Which leads me to go back to you do it in the projects, you do it in the operation. So I think it would lead to you, Dave.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna read it again. Cultivate innovative housing solutions and partnerships to advance the development of a variety of housing options to support a multi-generational and mixed income community by narrowing the gap between income levels and housing affordability. So however you wanna look at that, I feel that you know, maybe I got a little bit ahead of myself, but I feel that this again encapsulates the broader effort of addressing housing solutions and cultivating and growing those partnerships within our community to kind of help save this. Um, and so whether we call out unhoused or how, or homeless, I think is redundant. Because I feel like this helps address that. Um, and I don't disagree that, that we you know, we, we are taking this up because of direction, but I feel like when they hammered out two point one, I feel that feel like if you look at those key words, the KPIs are gonna go through the projects to show how they are are addressing that through many different vehicles.
It would seem as though that once you come up on the budget discussion, remember there's no restated again, there's no expectation, I think, and I'm not trying to speak for Jose, but there's not a sudden shift in the focus about all of a sudden what staff's gonna do about these services. They're gonna continue on what's already included in the current strategic plan as well as projects related to that. It would seem where you are, you're stuck and it may be helpful as you get into the budget discussion. If there's an appetite about council that you're gonna invest more resources, then maybe change the language. Because when you do change the language, it doesn't, people can infer, you're gonna do things differently than you've done before. So I'm just suggesting that maybe we pause here. Staff, you're gonna have a chance to revisit this in May, right? And as you go into the budget discussion, if you decide, look, we need to invest more public resources in that homeless and unhoused services, then you can go back and maybe change the language wherever it might fit. I, I'm just suggesting this. Or if you, if you decide, if you decide in the budget discussion, you're just gonna keep doing what we've been doing and this language satisfies that, then they match up well.
I am, I think, if I may, we have two counselors that want a word homeless somehow worked in the strategic plan. Three counselors that seem adamant not to include the word. So that's it. I'm, I'm okay with that. I'll tell everybody that, uh, three counselors. Decide that homeless is not a topic that should be in strategic plan. It's very simple.
You have a harmless addition. Don't put words in my mouth.
If you vote against it, which you best stand behind it. I mean, stand behind what you say.
I know. You did. You listened to anything I said.
To me, homeless, when you look at the strategic plan, is not just housing or mixed income or, uh, it's, it is not. It is wrong.
Do you not throw anybody else under the bus?
If you, you vote to give direction a certain way, that is your, your decision. I make my decision and I stand behind my decision. I think it's an innocent, innocent condition. Well, I, what does that mean? I, I say homeless can be in there. That's my position. Period. You can tell everybody that I don't want homeless in the strategic plan.
Well, I would just, uh, counter to say that I really appreciate the steps that city of Durango is taking to address homelessness. We're doing it through our strategic plan and through budgeting and through our initiatives that we have undertaken. I see us addressing it. I think we're doing, um, the best that we can given our resources and our staffing limitations. And I'm happy with the way it's written up there because I believe it talks about all levels of housing and narrowing the gap, um, for all. It's not identifying a specific subset.
There's a lot of emotion attached to this. I would just remind you about your language and inflammatory comments, antagonistic comments. You're trying to have a civil conversation about this. You're all passionate about this. You all bring a lot to it. There's history and there's points of view. There's, there's who you, uh, talk with in the community. We know there's a lot of emotion attached to it. So I would say you could be disagree with that, be making comments to people that create more stress around this subject. This is not an issue that's gonna go away. You're gonna continually have public policy discussions around it. And language does matter. You're absolutely right. And you're trying to determine how point of emphasis do you wanna make it? There's benefits to including it. There's benefits of not including it. Because I think, you know, it's, I'm not, I don't have a skin in the game here, but when you start including language, who, how long do you make that? It becomes an inventory. It becomes a laundry list and then all of a sudden you're back to now it becomes more tactical. It's not a strategic focus. And I, I just, I'm gonna say this again, there, there's no interpretation here that staff's gonna stop doing what they've been doing. Or that the emphasis in the community is gonna change. This is simply crafting a little bit of a different way of approach to it. Some of it's about the language to it and bringing it more to policy level, not so much of a tactical.
And if it's in our operational stamp, plan, which I believe it will be with the, the, the projects that we're working on, if and when you suggest publicly that three counselors were adamant about not including housing, it's in our plan. It's in the operational aspect of our plan. So that is not, not correct. In my opinion, it is in there. We have it in there through our operations and what we're doing. The next step. Yes, it's through the operational, which is a part, it's attached to it. It's the next page of this two point one that supports all of these items that we're focusing on. So I would suggest that that would be inaccurate.
Yes.
I would suggest that this is the, uh, discussion that happens whenever there's a topic that comes up that, um, is not related to the dominant cultures. That, oh, we got it here, we got it here, we got it here. It's in there. But then when you bring up the topic, it never comes up to, it's in variety of housing options, you know? It's like, so I feel like, um, Olivia, we've had a discussion and we're gonna get overvoted, but that's just the way my, um, my life goes when we deal with administrative options from, uh, the dominant society. So I accept that.
And I accept it too, so.
And I really think that we're working hard to address all levels of housing in our community. And I, I really appreciate staff's efforts.
I would offer you politically.
And I would say that is always the response that comes up. And I'm saying that so you don't have a last word.
So I'll have the last word. Um, so I would say politically, if you mischaracterize this as though the city's doing nothing, you're creating more problems. Because the city is continually devoting tremendous amount of resources to it. And you give a lot, if you give the impression that somehow the city's back that they were.
Anything. All I wanted was it included on this page. You're putting those words in our mouth. We never said the city wasn't doing anything.
No, but if people interpret that somehow you're changing force.
But this is how people interpret it when it's not out there.
Well, people, you're right. People do infer, but what does that mean? Where am I included in that? And you can look at a lot of these different goals and members of the public area of vested interest could say, oh, are you gonna call, you know, youth? Well, how about, uh, and I think the point was mentioned earlier, which is a whole other subject about mental health. That's part of that ecosystem as well. And it's not just for the unhoused, the mental, I'm just sharing that. So you start looking at these and trying to think about what's not included.
You're a facilitator, so how would you facilitate what I want on this page?
Well, I'm not a magician, so I can't make public policy for, for you. You're trying to reconcile about what your point of view is here. And it sounds like you're maybe at a, uh, at a point where you're stuck. And I don't hear, I don't see a process being stuck. I don't hear funding being stuck. I hear language being stuck.
We're not stuck. I think, uh, council Yasi and me have agreed that whatever has been, uh, the direction, which is the majority, is the may to move forward. And I would really like to move forward because we have a whole bunch of other issues in our strategic plan that we need to discuss.
Sounds like a good suggestion. So let's move on.
Can I clarify a point that I made earlier?
Wait, wait, no, no, let's just move on. We'll work through our case of the topics. Let's go.
Alright, so we'll hold that comment maybe toward the end. So next up, the chief, um, safety, quality of life, something easy.
I love it.
A little heavy.
You can imagine how difficult some of our first ones were.
Well, good morning, mayor and council. Um, uh, so maybe you're uh, so I'm here today to provide, uh, information on SQL safety and quality of life, which was previously enhanced livability and sense of place. Uh, go back to follow that, that discussion. Scott's always awesome. You know, and Scott's gonna be the word guy. That's gonna be the, uh, numbers gal. And I think someone to be the get it done guy. And there's a word flag on this one. It's not a good topic as you can see. So we've got two objectives to go along with this. Um, so we're just talking about this one here. You know, when we first looked at DLS in the past, it really didn't feel like it captured a lot of what public safety did, um, what the other amenities of parks and trails and the library and how it works. More sense of place, it was just enhancing livability, but it wasn't providing that, that basic foundational need of safety and then it didn't really align with our mission, which incorporated quality of life. And so we felt that those were really important components to, to bake into this actual, this goal here. Um, as we know, you know, we have amazing amenities in Durango with parks, trails, we have lakes and night waters, tons of open space. We've got world-class library services. And it's really cool for people to enjoy those things, but if they don't feel safe to enjoy those things, then how are they gonna get out there and actually do it and see and feel what we have to offer? And so when we as a staff are discussing this, we actually consider Maslow, Maslow's hierarchy. And that core foundation of Maslow's hetero needs, it are the basic needs of, of safety and security. So that's why we put this part in, in the list of our law order here. And then from there, as people feel safe that the basic needs met, they can actually move into their hierarchies of need within their, their life enrichment. And that incorporates quality of life and ultimately, uh, self-actualization. We're gonna be able to super intellectual to, to library. Uh, so that's how we bake it all together. And, um, in, in specifically within that work. And so, so it's three point one, to ensure the seamless operation, continue on enhancement of police code enforcement, nine one one communications and contract emergency services to advance public safety measures, reinforce community trust and reduce target crime rates to enhance the overall sense of safety. Again, it's back to that core foundational aspect of, um, what we're trying to accomplish. And we also believe we're gonna broaden this out a little bit to not only talk to the different components that the city has to offer, but since we do have contractual services, which are gonna be fire department, EMS services and now control, that we would also, uh, work in some measurements when we get to the strategic aspect of our KPIs, what they're doing as well. So we could put some bonus responsibility on them to be able to come back and help us again, enrich the quality of life services we provide for, um, for our citizens that actually are paying for the services themselves. And three out two is provide sustainable and inclusive arts culture and recreational opportunities by listening to the community's birth needs through engaged public services and extensive partnerships at local, regional and statewide levels. Uh, that's gonna be the aspect of parks and recreation and our library services, or divide those. Um, as again, we're just enriching people's lives through the services we provide and people come to Durango either to live or to record. Any questions on those before I move on to the projects?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna ask it. First of all, I appreciate the update and I think I've seen some really good changes on and I wondered dispatch and, and police. I was just wondering how, because there's also changes at the court system and the results seem to be very positive for our community, at least addressing systematic offenders, I guess. I have to always think about the right terminology. And where, or does it even show up in the strategic plan? I just refresh my memory and maybe Jose can help to. Does it, the court and the city attorney for that matter, uh, have a role in the strategic plan and where was it? And should it be somewhere in here? And would it, if it would be, would it be under this section? Might catch your guard there a little bit, but I'm
No, that's actually a good question. Yeah, man, it's a really good question. Mark, uh, in the city attorney's office is included in organizational stewardship. Uh, Mark was included in our conversations. I think for Mark, it's a little tough. He got here in May, June.
May.
May. So kind of really being a heavy input into the strategic line, he was kind of learning through with it, but he was included. Uh, the courts, uh, not necessarily the, the judge. Um, kind of that part about it in regards to where the judge is a little bit different is he has to be independent. So we're trying to make sure that we keep that kind of separate. If it's like, oh, the judge is with the police chief and the city attorney is over the prosecutor, you then start getting this part of like, if I'm going into this court, well, it's already cooked up, right? The judge knows the peak, the police chief, the city manager and the city attorney. So we try to keep it separate, uh, in regards to that. It doesn't necessarily mean it can't be incorporated. That was just the thinking of where you'll see who is included, who may not have been included in that conversation.
Patrick, for you a question. How does that work with other clients that you work for in facilitating these kinds of strategic plan retreats? Do other communities have the legal system, I guess, uh? Everybody fair and we have?
No, no. I think Jose captured it well. No, because there is a separation of roles and responsibilities there.
Okay, no, appreciate it. Clarifies that one.
And, and when we talk about reduced target crime rates, those are gonna be some of the areas we can focus on through our strategies and our tactics as a department. And then channel those to the appropriate courts within partnerships. Which they can then direct people to specific resources or the changes as well. So that's, I guess that's gonna be from our perspective on that part of the, um, it's happening there. It's gonna be very strategic. Any other questions on three point two either? Okay, great. Some of the project updates we're looking at, just a couple of podiums. Is with code enforcement, open space strategies, we incorporated the open space ranger program last year. And that has allowed us to get code enforcement folks back in on their new, uh, nuisance crimes and it's gonna be more centered to the city. Because they had a lot of mission creep where they were going out into the open spaces and having to eradicate a lot of those camps. Right now, the open space rangers are focusing on those particular areas and up program looking very well. So it's allowing us to get back again to floor services, core function without having a lot of mission creep. Um, and as we know, quality of life issues are the ones, the issues that council sees the most, the ones we see the most because that's the most community feedback we get because it's what's in our community space every single day. And so some of these strategies with that are gonna hopefully build and mitigate that. Uh, our crime reduction strategies are gonna include the expansion of our block camera systems. Uh, block camera systems are visible by some plate reader capture system. So that's gonna allow us to dedicate resources to know if we have to look internally to the city, externally to the city and more of those particular areas. Uh, of those implements are happening, those should also help those capture, um, uh, well, to mitigate our, more people that have to process as well. And also expand our real-time threat center applications, which are gonna create more efficiencies to be able to pull all of our to be able to pull all of our other resources we've got through technology in the one central place, where we're going to be able to utilize that more effectively and more timely um, to build reduce crime and more alleviated as a whole. Community operations, it's going to be more dispatch centered. Right now, we don't have a backup POM center. And so we need to work on that as we develop our facilities for the police department, where else can, uh, incorporate that into the design concept of it. So we have a fallback center of needing, and they're also doing continuous improvements and enhancements to their current center um, as they expand their staffing levels and the need, um, throughout time agencies with different. But as you can travel safety, we're, uh, exploring cameras, speed cameras, uh, systems right now. Um, that should be coming for council probably in the next couple of months. We've got some pretty good viable options and some pretty good strategies from our vendors. Um, we think the business model is pretty amazing. So I think the council will see that pretty soon. And then we'll continue with our targeted campaigns within specific areas. We're directed from community feedback and our. And public safety facilities, we're looking to modernize some of our training facilities, include a bar on training facility. And for the library, we're looking at, um, library funding sources. And this has been a long-term request, increasing library hours and services. Um, so we're going to enhance that poss- possibly in the future. And Parks and Recreation Maintenance Strategies are going to include the POM, which is preventative and operational maintenance plans for Parks and Recreation facilities. There's also going to be a part of wide replacement schedule for maintenance and recreational equipment. And the wave light and signage replacement and maintenance plan for the entire Parks and Recreation System, uh, citywide. And then with the partnership with Durango Mesa Park and the development partnership there, they're going to, uh, they're going to be working on development of MOU between the Durango Mesa Park and the city. And raise Durango Mesa Park Comprehensive Master Operational Plan. And to develop a communication plan for regular project updates as the foundation, um, continues to grow. And lastly, is the expanded arts and culture programs incentives. And this is going to include maintaining and enhancing our recreational library creative arts programming services.
So just a couple of points on there. One, the enhanced library planning with the question mark is us asking the question. So I don't want it to come off as like, that's what we're doing. That's really what we would call the, the, the library district. Uh, kind of looking for some guidance in regards to, is that something the council sees as continuing to work through and work forward to, or is that something that, uh, may no longer be something that you would like staff to, to work on? So that's where the, that question mark part goes to. Uh, I'm going to bring up a suggestion that Aaron brought to me, so it's not my idea, but if it goes bad, it is my idea. And I'm going to try to step into this, uh, realm and please don't, uh, kill the messenger, but this may be a part where we talk about as quality of life, the services that we provide to disadvantaged communities. Um, and because that really are quality of life issues that we deal with. Um, and so that might be an objective that we could put on this one as quality of life, continuing the funding for the programs and partnerships with our nonprofit organizations to continue and assist, uh, underrepresented or underserved communities. Just as a part going through my idea of going through it, uh, I don't mean to run, rehash everything else up again, but obviously just kind of bringing a suggestion to the table and that's all I have and I'll stop now.
I think just like anything else that like fall, falls in a lot of different areas, right? You have sustainability for a lot of different areas. You'll have the, is it idea, idea falling in a lot of different areas? I think homelessness and dealing with our unhoused population is going to fall within a different, and of course, safety and quality of life is going to be one of them as well as housing and, uh, so, yes.
Chief, could you expand upon the Durango Mesa Park? What's going on there with, uh, the safety more details? Because I know it's, it's going to come up since it's probably going to get more used since it's opened.
Right. So our park rangers, the open space rangers that we developed this last year, we have two up there right now. Um, they're working, they're, they're going to be primarily resourced up there to be able to, uh, to look at that and see what our needs are. Again, that program is developing, so we don't, you know, on paper, we had some brainstorming ideas, what it's looking like. But that is there to appeal to the deployment that come across the different duties that they have. Those duties are continuing to expand themselves. Um, we know that there's an immense amount of open space, the Lake Snideworps, foundation of the Durango Mesa Park. So we can see this program expanding, uh, greatly. Um, again, right now we have two and hopefully, you know, the need is going to probably justify itself, I guess, in the future. And, uh, we'll figure out what those needs are as the services of the foundation, um, continue to evolve and change as well as they continue to implement trails and recreational venues everywhere.
Kind of going back to, uh, three point one, three point two, um, coming from food and beverage lens and downtown business lens. One thing that I really like, how you have incorporated public engagement with the PD, um, like what that front facing piece looks like. And I see engaged in three point two, engaged public services and I guess I'd like to put something here about how you are, I, I guess like you are showing it, but like I would like to see engaged presence with the community in there because I feel, I feel like that's where you guys are really making good strides and given that different perception is that you only show up when something's wrong. But like what Patrick Engel is doing with, you know, responsible alcohol service and, and how you guys are doing the core program. Um, I feel like it's important to spell some of that out about how you are engaging with the public when it's not an emergency or not a crime being committed.
Other comments about these items? Questions?
So before we move on, I would like to say, uh, the library is perfectly happy to get direction here. Um, or direction in a more public setting or a combination of both, uh, the preference of 2024 or 2026 or valid initiative. If you gave me direction that 2026 is preferable, because my current direction, which has not changed as of yet, was pursue a petition to get on the 2024 ballot. Um, if that has changed, we could say that here and I could break into a public session by working with the issues committee, getting them actually informed, because they said they bill like doctor physicians. If they have directions on 2026, and then we could bring a new timeline, so there will be plenty of public process, so that it wouldn't feel like we're doing things behind closed doors.
Mike, simplify that a little bit, Luke, because I think 2024 is out, like the commissions, they're not even there. So I think it's more of, is this an objective that the council sees staff working on for 2026?
Okay, so I'm on the library board. I understand all the principles and this and what happens. Okay. And that decision also was made by the previous council. And now, what I never got a clear answer for was most people I talked to, they don't really care if they go to the library on Sunday. Is that the only reason you want to go to library district to increase your budget? Uh, and you know, and if you did go to a library district in this ordinance, I would like to know where the money that we're saving from giving to the library, where that would be spent. If we do afford with this, a new resolution.
Let me, Luke, if I can, if I can answer that question for you, Council Yasi, I think, uh, if you're done, I'm sorry. I didn't, okay. So if I recall correctly, and I have a few counselors that were here before, I'm going to try to encapsulate what I believe was the reasoning that this kind of happened, because it snowed, it was a little bit of a snowball effect based on a lot of factors. The first one being, and the main one, was that the library was going over budget to what could be supported by the joint sales tax funding and the city was contributing for the rest. Uh, so we were taking the overage. The council at that time then kind of talked to the county about it. And the county's position was, we're in for what we can do in the joint sales tax. Anything that's over that needs to be on the city. At that point then, is when the library tax district was coming up as a way of, well, maybe if the city doesn't want to overtake that overage, that's not supported by the joint sales tax funding, we could give a library tax district the ability for the library to control its financing, knowing that if it went above and beyond that they'd have the ability to have their own taxing entity and, and raise that funding, which then could lead to possibly Sunday usage or, uh, extra hours. But really, I think that the main crux of that was from the city's bespoke, from the city's perspective at the time, was that it was going over budget and the city was having to take on that overage by ourselves. The county's perspective on it, uh, I'm not trying to speak for the county, but from what I understand is they have library districts everywhere else. It's the only place that they haven't. So they would wrap, there this be a library district and then free up the joint sales tax funding, which would need city and county, uh, direction support for something else. Housing was something that brought up to it and that portion. So it never really was about Sundays and extra hours. Those of it, the real, I think, origination was that if it was going to go over the joint sales tax, the county's position was the city was going to have to pick up that entire overage. And so instead of the city having to either pick it up or make a cut, the thought process was, well, let's just do a library tax district and allow them to be, uh, on their own in contract with the city. And therefore we wouldn't have to worry about the extra revenues or portions of that. So that was the crux of it. It's kind of changed, it's evolved, different positions have come out through it. I don't think we have really clear direction, uh, from a staff perspective of like, is this something that the council still wants us to participate and go through? So as we look at a strategic plan and this is a two years out and this is an objective to work towards, this is our check-in with the council of like, is this something that you still want us to go towards a library tax district? Or do we kind of disengage and continue the operations as they are?
Do you know what the overage amount is?
It's no longer overage. Uh, we've been doing it within the joint sales tax, but I, I can't recall the one year that it did go over.
Yeah.
Uh, how much it was. It might've been like a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five.
That's what I was thinking it was. What was that? And then it was during COVID, the services got cut then. So I think it was to bring up more cuts if anything goes wrong and also to, um, yeah, potentially free up some joint sales tax. So my initial thoughts, just start throwing it out there. Um, when we did the original survey that had a lot of support coming through, um, property taxes were much lower. My concern, and then I brought up during the county meeting, is that property taxes have gone up so substantially. I don't think now is the time. And if we felt like now is the time, I'd want to do another community survey just to see if public sentiment has changed because of that. Um, that is my main concern because affordability is so important to our constituents. I wouldn't want to put it, I wouldn't want to put the ballot measure in a negative position just because of that, without knowing to, um, I'm not willing to, yeah, yes, it does free up money in the joint sales tax, but at the cost of people paying more property tax. And so, and again, if, if property taxes come down in 2026 and the public sentiment is back up, I'm down. Here for it, but if not, then.
And I'm going to just say, this is a very specific question that requires direction and I'm not prepared to discuss that. I, I think it requires a study session or an agenda item. So also people in our community can share their concerns if it's a public problem. Um, because we can also discuss funding for housing or certain directions we take on other topics. So I, I'll not participate in details. Library is important. It's on the strategic plan. That's where I stand.
I thought we were going to have this discussion in combination with the discussion about other funding, things that we needed to have like 2005 re-op.
There, there's two things that are coming up with this and, and this is where, I mean, obviously a retreat is a posted agenda. We're not getting any decisions. And if we did, we would go to an agenda meeting or a, a posted meeting to do so. But it is a part for us as we're looking at strategic planning, where we're going, because as this project has evolved and changed, we're having people now from the library board and their issues saying, saying, is the council supportive of going to do this in 2026? As a staff, we don't have that answer. And so it comes to that part of like, really, I, I don't know. And normally what we'd like to do, especially when you have that in a retreat, is kind of asking, is this something from a participation part of, it is important for the city to say that the library, this, the library needs to have its own funding mechanism. Then we can start working our way through. Does it mean it's a decision made today that, you know, starting today, we're going to go? Absolutely not. Because nothing that we're doing here is a decision until it's approved by the council in a public meeting in, uh, in May.
Of course.
So we're just trying to kind of figure out, like, you know, as we go through, how does this fit in?
Well, and that's why how it fits in is important to me, to the bigger picture. So if we're going to the voters for a re-op at one point, what does that look like? And we also know that nine R is thinking about going for another ballot initiative. So it's just kind of looking at all of them. When you look at potential funding opportunities, if it has to do with the ballot, and then we kind of have, I, it helps me to look at the big picture of what we're asking in the community.
Sure.
In, 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 in full.
Absolutely. So this would not be 2024 though. This would be 2026. And that would be a conversation that we can have and if the direction from the council or what we can kind of receive as feedback is that they're not quite sure about 26. They're going to still need some more time as we look at the, the sales tax portion of that. That's great. Um, that's a way that we can continue to have those conversations and just saying, this is where the council is and us being able to prepare ourselves uh, with it, because we just do have, you know, even your staff members, they're like, what's going to happen? Where do you see the council on this? How does this work? It'd be good to say, you know, the decision's not made yet. Uh, they're still kind of going through it. I think that 2024 for sure is out, just because the county is out. It's not an issues committee to go through. Uh, the next one that they recommended was 2026. And if it's like, we just will continue to consider it and kind of go through it, but not make any decisions, uh, for a bit until we know more, that's fine. Or a survey.
And that's what we'll bring is if we, if there's council support for putting on agenda, we'll come to the agenda as a timeline, which would include another survey, um, so that we could, you know, at least one at the end of 2024. That's a two-year gap between 2022 and the survey was done, to see where the interest, and we would not look at bringing it, hey, put it on 2026 right now. We put some time in, come to you with the timeline we look at to approve or amend, so that we have that direction. Unless the direction would be, we don't want you to do that right now. We'd rather you spend your time and services elsewhere, whatever council supports will do.
Okay, so, um, I understand you're under a lot of pressure now. How would we go about letting the library know that we'll just postpone this until we have a state session with the survey and also the benefits, pros and cons to going to a library district. From Luke, because he has a lot of other issues he has to deal with. So would you be able to, okay, to maybe put this on a back burner for a while? Would that be suitable?
I would probably, instead of saying back burner, I mean, kind of what I'm hearing is the council has not given us clear direction uh, that the library task, the library district is where they want to go and they're still going to uh, do their due diligence and make a decision, uh, later on, but they don't have a a definitive answer right now. But that's better than us right now, following the previous council. It's like, go forth and go through it. We just want to make sure that we're not, again, getting in front or behind this council. And that's the part of where the question mark is there, because in a strategic plan, if we follow the direction of the council, we would have that as something that we're going to work on, but I don't want to place that in an operational plan. If this is something that this council is like, yeah, no, we really are very committal with this process going forward right now. We need more information.
This could also make it all about a citizen-led petition, correct?
Yes, it could. So the reason the law, the, the, the issues committee is calling for a joint resolution and the library supports this, this is one where I can say professionally, and I can say my own professional opinion is if there is not a joint resolution, the storyline is going to become the county is stealing the library from the city and then making the city pay all for it. And so if there's not a joint resolution saying, hey, the city, we're a city department, but the city actually supports this, we feel it's doomed to failure. Um, that's not a good thing or a bad thing. That's just, you know, you know, success or denial wise, we feel like as a library department, I don't want the petition alone. I would like to have city council saying, we believe by majority or not, this is the direction that should be pursued by the voters, because otherwise I can't really spend any staff time, even in informational support. And really I have to kind of find a way to ethically come out and say, without city support, I'm not going to comment on this at all. And so just if, if the city doesn't want it to succeed, um, there's only so much I can do that ethically under campaign law. Um, but if they want it to succeed, I feel like we're going to need a joint resolution at some point. But I do believe, I agree with the issues committee that there should be a petition first, because that shows there's some skin in the game by the public and they bring it forward. And then that gets that ball going as opposed to it just like, hey, you guys put it to a vote, there's one, there's two public hearings and then it's on there.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
What I'm sensing is there's probably not, uh, a commitment or committal level yet to kind of go through with this and that the council just going to need more time as this goes through.
Taxing issue, which Jessica brought up, because some of the county, okay, they already have what? Four other library districts out in the county. It's got to be a county vote to approve this. And some of them are feeling like they're being double taxed because they're paying for the the one tax, they're also paying for the property tax. So there's a lot of confusion, education that has to be done upon what is going to be in accordance.
Exactly. Yes.
It's complicated.
It's, it's going to be a time, a time-consuming process. And frankly, to be successful in 2026, the issues committee really does need to get started in 2024. the issues committee really does need to get started in twenty twenty-four. Um and so if the direction isn't, no, we don't support it. I can bring to them, there's, you know, it's ambiguous. They need more support from the public. They need skin in the game, so that's something to be brought for them to say yes or no to. They can't say yes or no to an ambiguous lack, because we currently don't have a mill rate to give you. That's still waiting on the county taxes center. And so, you know, you would be saying yes to a general idea, no to a general idea, or hey, that we we need more information from this issues committee. It needs to form and needs to bring us something that we can look at.
Okay. So the focus of today was to introduce you to all these concepts, the goals, the objectives, the projects, if you will. Make sure you understand those, you support those. There's questions as you had, conversations. This is sort of a two-part process. We we were trying not to make sure and cover everything today, so we wanted to provide you with all sufficient time to go back and forth. But time was also a bit of a speculative. So it looks like we're going to wrap up a little soon. We don't want to rush the rest of the hours.
Patrick, I mean, it's up to the council, but if we have an hour, we can continue to go through and just shorten up tomorrow if that's what the council would like to do.
We can do another chat for me if that's what you're gonna do.
What would be the process to take this down?
We have no idea.
So that's why I was thinking.
Sure.
How do you put it? You set it on the agenda for the next time.
The council wants to put it on the agenda and say what their item is. If uh you just want to have it placed on the agenda to discuss it in a meeting in regards to the council's desire for a library tax district, we'd be happy to do that if I have also wanting to do it. Want to take that action on the phone either?
Well, no, just to place it on the agenda, to place it on the agenda.
But it it would be a good idea to resolve this for the library.
We're not going to resolve it.
Like to get it something.
Anytime soon. It's it's such a big vague issue. And if the council wants me to bring more information to them, having that as a request is a new action that I can bring to the issues committee. And so in a month or two, we could bring an actual report to you that they have actual officer positions. And they are like saying, okay, so we've got a mill rate. We do, we we propose us going to report petition process and you after that petition, supporting this process of a joint resolution, you know, based on these actual factors. If we were to report to you now, it would be very vague. Because I just don't have that yet. So if you give it, give us about two months, I can have that issues committee hopefully actually form. And then they could just do the petition or they could bring to you, hey, we want to do this petition. We want to say, see, is there still support for that aspect of it? And then you, when a joint resolution would come to you, could decide whether you support that timing or not. But frankly, I don't think the timeline for a petition is right now anyway. I don't think they are going to perform it right now. So this would already be enough direction for me to bring to the issues committee. So in two or three months' time, I could just give you an operational update. Or the issues committee could provide one and then I could report it.
So let me check the appetite of the mayor council. Thanks. Do you want to stay and try to keep plowing? Do you want to stop and just pick up fresh tomorrow? It's up to you all.
Bye. Keep it on going. It's up to you guys. I'm good. I'm on board with whatever.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we'll keep moving. You can go, Sarah.
Are you ready? Sarah was born ready.
Um I might use my podium.
Don't you see what says Sarah's podium?
I see the plaque on the front of it.
Sarah's podium.
Right. So. So I have a chance to back off. I was like, those are a lot. All right, so this is referencing, it's currently an effective infrastructure network. And we are proposing a change to RIT or Reliable Infrastructure and Community. Um so this is a fairly ambitious goal that is addressing transportation, aviation, um information technology, and other works. Sorry, I was not ready for today. Putting you on the spot, sorry. Oh, no, you're fine. I was I was preparing for tomorrow. Okay, so we uh in all of our discussions about the goal, we felt that effective didn't quite capture what our vision was for the community. Feels more like a checkbox than um than than what our passion is. So um I am so sorry. So we talked about service delivery priorities for mobility, sanitation, aviation, and asset management. Uh reliability is what we landed on. It translates a lot of the qualities that we prioritize in our service delivery. Delivery, like dependability, consistency, and equity. So secondly, we took a look at the responsibilities of our four departments and the services that we provide. While infrastructure network um does cover an important and critical piece of our responsibility, we felt that a missing piece was the reference to our connectivity services that we provide that are connecting the community. Um and this refers to connectivity in all of its various forms. So not only capital infrastructure projects and asset management, but also the services of connectivity that we provide, like the airports provision, connection beyond our region, transit service that connects people to the scope of their lives in Urango, and critical fiber optic services. So based on the need to capture the services we deliver, along with the importance of maintaining our infrastructure network, we did real uh land on this reliable infrastructure and community. We feel that by focusing on the infrastructure and our um our responsibility in maintaining effective in- infrastructure, that prioritizing the connectivity services and maintaining the focus on that supports fewer goals that we've heard from the council over the previous years since you adopted this. Recent switch to the current strategic plan. Currently, as it's written, Effective Infrastructure Network has fourteen separate objectives that are sometimes redundant, sometimes read as an operating plan and have less of the strategic focus that we're looking for. Um most of the measures that are currently written have a start and an end point, as we talked about with some of the other goals. So we wanted to move to more of the high-level strategic. And our goal team, which consists of myself, Allison, Tony, and Justin, worked to find strategic overlaps where we could eliminate some of that redundancy and ensure that we are um capturing the full objectives of ready. So with feedback from the E L T, these are the six objectives that we did come up with. And there are six. They are still rather specific because infrastructure and all of our large departments um do have those specific goals that we need to meet. So four point one, for by consistently staying reliable and accessible mobility and transportation services throughout the community. Four point two, invest in transportation and infrastructure systems that maximize safety, mobility innovations, accessibility, and user satisfaction. Four point three, uphold a continuous high-efficiency system for managing water, wastewater and stormwater systems that adhere to strict compliance with environmental regulations. Four point four, maintain and enhance DRO status as the key regional hub for aviation services by delivering safe, efficient, and sustainable airport operations and running a competitive airline environment. Four point five, provide resources supporting maintenance expansion and ensuring reliable and secure IT infrastructure. And four point six, continue planned expansion of city service transportation system and maintain existing assets with them directly. So like the other goals, we have some high-level projects illustrated here for you. And ob- obviously, these capture some more specific operational goals as we move down uh move down the line. But we wanted to show you uh what some of our strategic projects are for each of the areas within this goal. So sustainable transit funding that can cover maintaining and identifying an actual source of transit funding, also enhanced and expanded transit operations. Multi-modal projects and initiatives uh refers to all of our C I P, our bicycle pedestrian education programs, um and implementing our parking plan for transportation and management. The airport facilities and parking upgrades. Uh example of this would be uh executing phase one and B, one A and one B of the terminal development project and executing two plans in phases of the airport parking expansion. Um fully diverse climate plan, funding source for stormwater improvements. Um could include projects like implementing the rain garden at Thirteenth Street and Fire Department. Upgrades to water utilities and structures. Um can include water treatment plant upgrades and ongoing pipe replacement. Um and then road network expansion initiatives. An example of this is reconstructing North Jameson Range Road and upgrading annex to County Route two fifty and two fifty-one. And the IT infrastructure upgrades and technical asset deployments, including core switch and edge switch upgrades, video surveillance service storage upgrades. And then um expansion of the fiber network is prioritized along with other projects such as Spams River Trail and street projects, just in those opportunities. And so that is where we landed for upgrades to the Effective Infrastructure Network.
Questions, comments?
It's a lot in one.
It's a lot. Your structures, um compensation covers a lot, the Radaway, water sewer.
Airport.
Airport, mobility, these are fixed assets. And you can appreciate that here. When you invest in things, you have to continually be reinvesting them. You're never really done. This is a line of business uh that you're in and you're trying to make sure that you're keeping it as high priority. So this is not always very evident to the public. Is it? It's not better.
Is it appropriate to maybe in here but a consistent and sustainable stream of of revenue for transportation? Just is that is that hurting you there?
It's in the subject list.
Oh, okay, sorry, I.
No, no, it's not here. I was, but I was like, oh, yeah, it's here, but then it's not here. It's there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I think you did a good presenting, relatively unprepared on this, which covers a big chunk of our uh city operations. In five minutes or ten minutes.
Yeah, thank you for jumping in, Sarah. I, no, you're great. You did great.
This is probably one of the few and only areas in local government where you can actually determine sort of lifespan of assets. So it provides you a little bit of different criteria by which you can at least offer options. Obviously, funding is critical in that. But many of the things that you do that are more people-centered don't have those same like programs. They don't have that same lifespan. So they're more people-centered. Obviously, these are capital intensive. So you can measure, okay, what's the the P C I and the strict pavement condition index or when you replace water sewer or the aviation. Some of that's optional, but you're also trying to figure out when you make investments. Other partners are involved with that. And this is probably the one areas too where you're trying to secure federal and state funding or as a, as a, as a resource. So you don't control all the variables in that sense of timing.
I'm sorry, I love the change of community connectivity, because I think that that is a huge thing that council constantly brings up. Um and so I do appreciate the change in name there. Um and then just like a consistent and being, you know, safe, obviously the word safe, safety, love, one of our key initiatives. Um and then maintenance, like making sure we're including that in our focus, because I feel like for so long it was always like, build a new facility, build a new facility, but no one talks about maintaining it and then also enhancing. Um and so, yes, I appreciate all the effort that you guys did. Well, and I think it is interesting that, you know, you do throw, this is such a core of who of our city, right? Our services, you talk about our mission statement, and this number four is so much, and it's the one we talk about the most that we need funding, consistent funding for the core of our city. And so it's.
And this also has different funding sources, right? Enterprise funds and general funds. So you're trying to figure out, what is that in the scheme of? How do you, how do you make those investments? What source?
Stormwater isn't very sexy to fund.
Until it's not there.
Exactly.
And people notice it. I would say on the roads, and Jose's been in this business long enough to know this as well, as well as some of the staff. There's really two different types of cities as they look at road and street maintenance. There are those that say, how much do we want to spend and then figure out how to spend that and then balance competing interests with other things. There are other cities who say, what do we have left? They're always playing catch-up. So I think being more, trying to identify, this is a priority. How do you allocate? Trying to look for the sustainable, reliable funding sources and say, with, without, with short of a major hiccup, you're trying to devote that consistent investment in that infrastructure. You're still playing catch-up, but you're you're a little bit ahead of the game. Cities that um that wait till, see how much they have left, that they're really not being strategic. And the worst problem just gets worse. And I definitely have seen across the country, especially post-COVID, a lot of your peers are trying to get back to the basics and they're trying to reinvest in their roads, because they're hearing it from residents. Which is good that they notice it. And of course, the public is, what are you going to do? What are you going to do my street? When is my street getting serviced? So this is very uh very focused. And this is near term, short term, long term. What you're doing now, what you're doing over the next few years, what you're doing really over the next several years, right? This, this, you're never done. Comments or objections, council?
Okay, um thank you for the presentation. I thought it was uh well concise and it hits all the highlights. Okay, so on the aviation, I know that Tony really writes a lot of grants and brings in a lot of money to move our airport along. And I'm wondering if that's what's going on with the I T or does the city pay for the I T stuff? You know, like the um, what was it, the internet?
The fiber network?
Yeah, fiber network. Where does that funding come from?
From general fund or depending on where it comes through. If it's for an enterprise fund, it may come from them. Uh but.
So anyway, start writing grants for that stuff and.
I think we look at every option that we can. We do have a grants coordinator in finance, so we we do look. I'm just not sure we've been as successful on that side, but I'll pass it to Justin for anymore.
Yeah, because.
In the past, we have expanded our fiber network through grants. Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Tony. I recognize your hard work on this.
I'm on the fiber side, but.
Airports.
Definitely on the airports.
Yep. Okay, I'm just curious.
All right, we'll, I'll go ahead and wrap up. That works just for y'all. I think probably now'd be a good time for a a break. Uh tomorrow we'll have tool number five and then do a SWOT analysis with the council. Uh I think it's one of those things that's very important uh that we have kind of what we see as the the elected body, what we see as our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Uh I just want to thank you all for taking some time uh today to meet with us and staff and kind of look at the the projects that we have going on. And then uh finally, just a big shout out to our our team here. Uh I think you're seeing a staff that's uh amazingly innovative. Uh they are on their toes. They're able to do really great presentations. And you're really seeing the organization uh really begin to mold uh into a place of where we're really continuing to push the ball farther and farther every time. And I'm extremely proud and can't say enough about the staff and team that we have here and uh just honored to serve with them.
Yeah.
See you all tomorrow.